An announcement to make, Planning Board member Stuart Glassman, who resigned from the Planning Board a couple of months ago, passed away recently. In his retirement, he was a retired surgeon. He could have volunteered with any type of nonprofit medical board, but he chose the Planning Board. Something kind of out of his wheelhouse, something he was passionate about. And if we could just take a moment of silence and remember Stuart.
Good day, Matt.
John Black resigned from the Board just in the last week or so. John spent over twenty years on the Planning Board, so twenty-five years on the Planning Board. So thank you, John, for your service. A lot of, a lot of good input over the years and a lot of decisions made over the years. Thank you, John. Okay, let's get to the agenda. First item is approval of the agenda. Got a motion?
Right, okay.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second, then I have a question for staff about the agenda.
You want to do that before we approve it?
Well, we need a second anyway to even discuss it technically. But
Okay.
When the City Council was setting up their meeting agenda for two thousand twenty-three, they hesitated on their April sixth meeting because it's both Passover and Monday Thursday. They're thinking booting it to Thursday, the thirteenth, which would conflict with our meeting.
Hmm.
It's been rescheduled to Wednesday, April twelfth.
I'm sorry?
It's been rescheduled to Wednesday, April twelfth.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so our, our meeting on Thursday, or Thursday, April thirteenth is
Will be the day after the City Council meeting.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
So we have a motion to approve the agenda. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, approval of the minutes from our February meeting. Everybody's had a chance to read through those. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second Peter's motion.
That makes it easy for whoever's taking the notes.
Indeed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. There is nothing in the way of old business. We're working on all new business here. And the first item is a rezoning, a standard rezoning on Hillview Boulevard, which is right off of Spartanburg Highway. And I imagine Matt's gonna talk to us about that.
Yes, good evening. This is our first item for a standard rezoning for three parcels at two-ten, two-twelve, two-fourteen Hillview Boulevard. This request is to rezone these three parcels from R fifteen to C two, in total, just over three quarters of an acre. There are two property owners, Brently Orr and Ken Gordon of Bickering Brothers LLC to own those properties. These are the properties shown here. They are in a transition area. The uses in proximity of Spartanburg Highway are all zoned C three and contain some of the most intense land uses found within the city. The properties with access to South Grove Street to the north are zoned C two and contain a variety of commercial land uses as well. The R fifteen zoning, the single-family land use is in the middle along Hillview Boulevard represent kind of the final remnants of what was an entirely residential area. It was originally platted in nineteen forty-six. The subject property is adjacent to C two to the west and across the street from C three, across the street, C three to the south. C two and C three are intense commercial uses, commercial permit, intense commercial use to C three is the more intense of the two. And I have a use comparison chart at the end of the presentation that will go into more detail on that. These are the current uses under R fifteen. The permitted uses and special uses are listed here. We primarily think of this as a single-family, a two-family, low-density, medium-density residential zoning district. The other uses, churches, parks, home occupations are all very residential in nature. The proposed uses for C two are listed here and on the following two slides. So we have a large number of proposed commercial uses that would be permitted if this rezoning is approved. And again, I've got a slide at the end that compares all these. Taking a look at some of the site photos, two-ten is in the upper-left picture, upper-right is two-twelve, bottom-left is two-fourteen. And then two-oh-eight, I believe, is the garage automobile service use that is actually zoned C two currently, kind of in between R fifteen on either side. That's on the bottom right, so that fronts onto Hillview. Upper-left and upper-right are examples of single-family homes that front on Hillview. They're not part of this rezoning. And then the bottom-left and bottom-right are commercial uses that are visible from Hillview that are, that front onto Spartanburg Highway. So from Hillview, you're really seeing the rear of the commercial uses that front on Spartanburg Highway. And there are some points of access that cut all the way through some of these properties to Hillview currently. The future land use designation in our comprehensive plan designates the subject properties as high-intensity neighborhood. And really, the Hillview Boulevard serves as the, kind of the border between a high-intensity neighborhood and the Neighborhood Activity Center. So it is, the transition line is right down the center of the street. The high-intensity neighborhood designation is also representative, represented in the parcels north of Hillview Boulevard for those properties that are fronting either side of South Grove Street and properties to the south of Hillview Boulevard designated as Neighborhood Activity Center, as are all the properties in the vicinity of Spartanburg Highway. It should be noted that the high-intensity neighborhood designation calls for dense residential uses, but it does not recommend commercial uses along local streets. The commercial uses along South Grove Street that are designated as high-intensity neighborhood would likely still be in alignment with the comp plan because they are located along a minor thoroughfare. So the first criteria we consider, gotten into this a little bit, is the comprehensive plan consistency. In this case, the proposed zoning of the C two is primarily inconsistent with the future land use designation of high-intensity neighborhood, as it does not permit multifamily housing, and it would permit a range of high-intensity commercial uses on a local street. Further on, in the Land Use and Development Chapter, we find that this area is designated designated as priority infill area where we want to encourage infill development that utilizes existing infrastructure in order to maximize public investment and revitalize existing neighborhoods. The Population and Housing Chapter goes on to also promote compatible infill development, allow redevelopment and/or reuse of single-family homes that directly front on arterials into office or high-density residential uses, encourage a wide range of housing types and price points in order to meet the diverse and evolving needs of current and future residents, allow housing arrangements in existing and new neighborhoods that provide affordable and/or multi-generational housing alternatives, promote safe and walkable neighborhoods, encourage mixed land use patterns that place residents within walking distance of services. The Natural and Environmental Resources Chapter and the Cultural and Historic Resources Chapter, Community Facilities Chapter, and Water Resource Chapters did not have any relevant goals or strategies. And the Transportation and Circulation Chapter just states to encourage mixed-use pedestrian-friendly development that reduces the need to drive between land uses. So taking a look at this next criteria, we are looking at compatibility. In this case, we've discussed the transition area from the higher-intensity uses along Spartanburg Highway to the commercial uses along Grove Street, with Hillview essentially sandwiched in the middle. The strip of R fifteen zoning and single-family land use is located along Hillview, represent a holdout of a residential area. The third criteria is to change conditions. West of the subject property, the property fronting Hillview Avenue was rezoned to C two. This is the automobile use. It was rezoned to secondary business, C two, in two thousand eleven. And from reviewing the minutes of this decision, there, there is no record of what the discussion or the rationale was for that rezoning. There's, you know, one note of analysis that the parcel is four hundred and seventy-five feet from Spartanburg Highway, which is a major thoroughfare. And that's about the only, you know, real analysis that we could glean from looking at the, the, the records on that. The fourth criteria is public interest. In this case, C two would allow for additional commercial development, public facilities, the city, the, the site is already served by City Services. The Hillview is city-maintained. The Hillview Boulevard, city, city-maintained street that is designated as a local street in the comp plan. And then the effect on natural environment, in this case, subject properties already contain three single-family homes, and there are no development plans at this time, given that this is a standard rezoning. So I am going to make a recommendation from staff first, and then I can walk through the options that you would have for making a motion, and then also look at the comparison of the different zoning zoning districts that are, that are, you may want to consider. So our first is if the Planning Board is, feels favorable that this area should be rezoned to commercial to align with, with some of the uses that are around it. Staff is recommending that, A, we re-designate the future land use in the comp plan from the high-intensity neighborhood to Neighborhood Activity Center. And then secondly, that it, you consider rezoning it to RCT, which is Residential Commercial Transition Zoning District. Justification for that would be that the RCT has more neighborhood-scale commercial uses, doesn't allow quite as intensive uses as the C two. And it also has a requirement that as properties transition from a residential use to a commercial use, that the road in front of those properties be widened to accommodate the increased traffic that can be generated. Right now, there's a thirty or forty-foot right-of-way, but only a twenty-foot-wide road. The street is very narrow currently. So rezoning it to commercial, an increase in traffic that would result from that could be a strain on the existing infrastructure of this area. So RCT, with that requirement, as it continued to transition, it would widen and accommodate more capacity. The second one is to, if you were leaning more to maintain residential and align it with the comprehensive plan's future land use designation, you could consider rezoning to R six, which is our, our highest-density residential district. It does not permit commercial uses. So those are two recommendations to consider. I mentioned the use comparison. The, the columns here, you have RCT, C two, and then to kind of understand what's happening with Spartanburg Highway, we have the C three. Another consideration would be the C four, which is our neighborhood, commercial district. And you can see all the different uses and whether they're permitted. This is a lot to try and digest. The applicant has asked for C two. Staff is recommending RCT if it is going to be commercial. And so what I've done is I've highlighted in yellow all the uses that are allowed in the C two that are not permitted in the RCT. So you can kind of see the difference between the two. So the ones in yellow, allowed in C two, but would not be permitted under RCT. And there's a few slides here. You kind of see the distinction in intensity between the two. And then I mentioned the provision for improving access as properties transition to commercial uses. That's at the bottom of the screen there. And so with that, staff is recommending a consistency statement that finds that the request is inconsistent with the high-intensity designation and that if you are recommending approval, that you would then make another statement in your motion redesignating the property or the subject property to Neighborhood Activity Center. And then you would have rationale for approving the C two. If you were gonna recommend denial, then you would make the consistency statement, finding it inconsistent. You would not have to amend the future land use map, and you could use your rationale for denial. If you wanted to then recommend approval of RCT, you would make the denial recommendation, and then we have another motion for approval for RCT prepared with some rationale for approval for that zoning district. So you got, choose your own adventure. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Good job, Matt.
I have one. So the C two does not require the road infrastructure widening
It does not.
to twelve-foot per lane.
Does not.
Does not. Okay.
I have a question added to that same one, that if we change it to the RCT and the road requirement comes in, is that only to be initiated upon construction of something?
Change of use.
Change of use. And then it can just be a tard extension of the road as long as it meets city requirements for road? And so it doesn't have to be done immediately, just
It would, it would need to be done in order to change the use of the property.
Oh, it does.
They would have to extend it. In this case, it looks like it would need two feet.
Okay.
So that would come off there's the, the, the side that's that's fronting on Hillview.
But there's plenty of right.
There, it does appear to be plenty of right-of-way, yes.
But the, the improvement would only be in front of the lots
That's correct.
change their use.
That's correct. And so this, you know, how this plays out, you know, it, would it really go one parcel at a time until it was finally complete? Possibly. Could half of them do it, and then the city come in and finish off, fill some gaps? That's possible, too. So it may, you know, it's, it's basically setting it up so that if it is going to transition to commercial, we're preparing, we're paving the way for increased capacity for that route. Thank you.
And with the sale of other lots, they, a new owner could also come for rezoning for the same thing, C two or an RCT.
Other properties along that street would become candidates for, for this zoning district. That's correct.
Okay.
The city could also initiate rezoning those properties as well. The city has that authority to do it without the property owner petitioning the city to do that.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff?
And in fact, the way I've written the redesignation for the future land use map would be for all the properties fronting Hillview to be Neighborhood Activity Center, not just the three subject properties.
Okay.
Future land use is a little more of a broader brush. And so if we're gonna, it, it would not make sense to just designate the, those subject properties. You're really introducing, you know, or recommending a vision for the future for that, that entire corridor, just kind of, kind of split up, kind of chopped up right now between C two and R fifteen.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, is the applicant in the room, and do they wish to speak? We'll have, we'll open, yeah, we'll open it up for public comment. Yep, that'll be the next segment.
Ken Gordon of Bickering Brothers. And we purchased that home. That's a very small lot. Recently, we have the dye racing facility next door, the automotive facility. And it wouldn't be our intention to change anything. This is, that lot is very small, almost, it couldn't really be redeveloped. It, when we purchased it, it was operated by the, the prior owner as a grandfathered commercial use for, I think, forty years prior to our purchase. And we just felt like, you know, this makes sense for it to be C two as our piece of Jason is. And, you know, kind of bring that through that, that corridor.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and open up public comment. If there's anybody in the room would like to come and speak, come on up, give us your name and address, and tell us what you're thinking.
My name is Dan Brown. I own two parcels within forty, four hundred feet of the question lots. And I've owned it since roughly the mid-nineties on one of them, and even earlier than that on another. And that road's only twenty feet wide. I have experienced an automobile accident there myself where two light-duty trucks can't pass. I think it's twenty feet wide. There are homes, trashcans, kids. I think we're putting the cart before the horse. If you hadn't got the infrastructure, you can't run those medium-duty trucks through there. I was there today and had to pull our way off the road. Let one bite, seems inappropriate. That's the conclusion of my comments.
Thank you. Can you just give us your, do you need his address for the records?
Yes, if you don't mind.
Just give us your address.
Yeah, I've got his address.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else in the room would like to speak? Come on up, sir.
I would be, my name's Justin Chaney. I would actually be the the fifty percent equity holder of the business that would be in place of two-one-two Hillview. The property that's there now are two houses that are inhabitable. They, one is planned to be torn down. The other one is planned to be converted into a, an office. The business that's intended to be there is, would be
If you don't mind, so hold, hold up one sec. Yeah, if you don't mind, because we're considering a rezoning of the entire property, and all of those uses you saw listed would be allowed by right, it, it really isn't proper for us to know what you have intended. Because if it gets rezoned, any of those could be used
I got you. So the, the intended use, without speaking in detail, would only be allowed in C two. The RCT would not, to work in our favor, basically. And it would it would not be a high-traffic business that would be in there. Matter of fact, it would be minimal. The property that is across the street from Direct Injection is C two. It has only access from Hillview. The garage next to it is only access to C two, suit to Hillview. And the oil change place that is on Spartanburg Highway has an entrance onto Hillview. The lot next to it is for sale. It is C three, so it would actually, upon sale, be allowed to do anything by right of what is in the zoning.
Okay, excuse me. Could you point that out on map? What he's talking about, please?
Um, just a little bit left, that lot right there, yes. Yeah, that lot is for sale, zoned C three highway use. So it would actually be able by right to do anything that is the same as on highway, as on a highway use in Spartanburg Highway. Another thing about RCT that I had, that kind of stuck out to me, too, is that is for those properties to be zoned into RCT. The zoning says that there has to be at least one acre in size to be switched to RTC, and those three properties together do not equal three-quarters of an acre. It also is intended that the RCT would be in transition from a residential to a commercial area. And if you look at the zoning map, with the exception of about five houses, that transition's already happened. So it's really, the, the RCT would not work in very good favor for the owners in this case, for the, the dual, the double property. It also says in RCT that the, the size of the lot at the road must be seventy-five feet. In this case, those two lot, actually, those three lots are seventy-five, or sixty feet across the front. Um, the two one four, uh, which would be the house, uh, the property closest to the R fifteen. Under C two zoning designation, those properties and those buildings meet the setback requirements for C two. If that property is rezoned as RCT, they do not meet the requirements for setback and yardage. They would then be become non, if I'm not mistaken, they would be non-conforming structures. And then we would have uh, we would have, uh, we, I guess we'd have to go back to a planning board or go to a uh, um, for any changes to have those, those changes to those properties approved. Um, so from what I understand is those properties or those, those structures could not be changed, the use unless they were brought to a conforming uh, conforming for RCT, which would um, is not um, would not suit our plan. Um, do you guys have any questions from?
Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Did we get an address? Did we get an address for the record? If you, if you'll just give them your address for the, for the minute. Okay, anybody else in the room that would like to speak? How about on the Zoom call? Anybody on the Zoom call? If you, if you have some public comments, go ahead and use the raise your hand feature and we will unmute you.
We've got one online.
Okay.
Lynn.
Williams Chadwick Allen. Comments I want to make are, as someone that lives on a street that's half commercial and half residential, it really does make a difference if one side of the road is residential. Um, I hear the applicant saying across the street that that is commercial, they could do whatever, but it, it does make a difference. Um, one concern is, you know, we talk about the need for housing. This is housing right here. It's within walkable distance. It's been here for a long time. There's a neighborhood there. There's dogs and animals. And so I agree with the denial for the um, commercial rezoning potentially. Um, I also just caution the rush to um, push for high density housing because that is a whole nother argument that I believe needs to have proper notification to the neighborhood if it's going to go to high residential because that has different implications. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the Zoom call?
No, no, their hands are raised.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comment for the rezoning on Hillview. Um, I, I have a question for staff after the public comments. Does anybody else have any questions for anybody or?
I just, I wanted to add a comment on behalf of the residents that I spoke with. They um, like it to remain um, residential in the area. And they chose not to have it changed to C two. So I'm be there on their behalf. I'm just putting that out as a comment.
You spoke to a couple of the neighbors?
Yeah, I spoke to uh, three. I would like staff to address the comments on RCT.
On the one acre?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's what I'm concerned to.
Yes, so those, if those minimum requirements were not met, it would be uh, considered non-conforming and essentially an applicant that was coming with a request for RCT would have to meet those standards. The city can rezone property, has the authority to rezone property, uh, how it chooses. Um, there's a difference between non-conforming structures and non-conforming uses. So if the RCT was approved, you could, um, any of the uses that are permitted within the RCT would be conforming uses. The structure itself, if it's non-conforming, um, there would be certain limitations on it, you know, expanding it, adding on to it. It would have to meet certain standards, but that structure can be maintained. Um, and used for a conforming use uh, in whatever zoning district it gets zoned for.
It would be legal non-conforming because it would.
It would be legal non-conforming and the uses were under RCT would be permitted within it.
What was the thing about one acre? I don't see that in the zone.
Uh, it's like a minimum lot.
Minimum lot area.
If you're gonna request that area. What's that?
Minimum lot area in square feet, it says eight thousand.
For.
Anything about an acre?
For RCT, it, um, I believe it has a requirement that to request rezoning to this district, the minimum size would be one acre that, that you need to have at least an acre land.
And this is less than an acre.
This is point seven eight. They, they are, they have not come with a, come to us with a request for RCT. This is a staff recommendation is that RCT would be more appropriate than C two.
Right. I've got, okay, so an applicant can't ask for RCT unless they have a minimum of one acre. But if the city decides that it's more appropriate, even though it's less than an acre, they're allowed to.
That's correct. That's a good summary.
Okay. Discussions. What are you thinking, Andrew?
I don't love it because I've been down that road many times and I don't use it as a shortcut because of that curve. Um, and I, I know that he said he wouldn't have a lot of traffic, but he, who's to say that they're going to be there for a long amount of time and then somebody else comes in and has a whole lot of traffic, so.
Hmm, if, if I may, sorry to interrupt your dis- discourse. Um, that statement is kind of exactly why it's prohibited from stating what use you intend to use uh, the property for because you, it is the planning board and city council's responsibility to consider the, 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 the full range of uh, potential uses and their impacts uh, for C two was, was requested. And so just want to make that clear before you continue.
Barbara?
Um, C two, the RCT would be more of a change that I would feel comfortable with. People in the neighborhood um, that I spoke with prefer to keep it residential. I think that it is an area in the future plan of the city that may become more commercial. I can't tell you if that's five years, two years or ten years. Um, the road currently does not is not for accommodating high traffic trucks. Um, I would not change it to C two.
Hmm, hmm. What do you think, Neil?
I wouldn't change it. Um, I wasn't as gusty as Barbara. I didn't speak to uh, other people along the road. They run in terror perhaps, but uh, um, walking the neighborhood Tuesday with my wife, the thing that struck us was we sit here as a planning board, month after month, rail about the lack of affordable housing. This is the kind of area I grew up in in Buffalo. Uh, very modestly priced housing or small lots can be modestly priced. Um, it's kind of thing that Matt and I have spoken about numerous times uh, where we plugged the bullet hole, the uh, donut hole a couple of months ago between two and five acres to allow for small housing developments. Here we'd be getting rid of three potential housing lots uh, and probably another half dozen as they cascade over the next couple of years. And I don't see a positive side to it. Um, in the interest of keeping housing, keeping single family housing at a lower level probably. Um, I can't support this.
What about the RCT?
No, I might be talked into R six by thought Lynn Williams raised a very good point that that's something that's drastic enough that it should be punted to another month. So we can really look at it thoroughly. Um, the RCT, I think opens it up way too much.
Hmm, it does. All right. Do we have uh, we have a motion then? Anybody want to make a motion? If we can get some consensus.
Well, I will make the denial motion and let's see where we stand on that, if that's okay. Um, oh, you're gonna pull it up for me? Thanks, Matt. Okay. No, that's not it. Perfect. I, I move planning board to recommend city council deny an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property pins nine five seven eight dash zero four dash four seven eight five, nine five seven eight dash zero four dash five seven three three and nine five seven eight dash zero four dash five seven nine two by changing the zoning designation from R fifteen medium density residential to C two secondary business based on the following. The petition, one, the petition is found to be inconsistent with the city of Hendersonville twenty thirty comprehensive plan based on the information from the staff analysis and the public hearing. And because the high intensity neighborhood designations call for attached single family residential and multifamily residential as the primary land uses and only recommends office and residential uses along thoroughfares. While the proposed zoning district would permit attached single family uses, it also permit a range of commercial uses on a local street. Two, we do not find this petition, this petition, sorry, to be reasonable and in the public interest based upon the information from the staff analysis and the public hearing and because, one, the proposed commercial zoning district is incompatible due to the residential character established along Hillview Boulevard. Two, the petition to increase intensity is incompatible, given the property frontage on a local street. Uh, and I believe that is it.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
So we have a motion made by Neil, seconded by Barbara. Any discussion?
I'll make one comment. Nice having a little bit of residential amid all the commercial. You got a place for people to live that work in all the areas around it. You're gonna transition into commercial? Probably over some period of time. And that's appropriate since everything else there is commercial, but keeping the little residential infrastructure, I don't think it's necessarily a bad idea. I think it's a good idea. So.
And, and I'll add, I think that we should uh, do a text amendment to add residential to the RCT district and maybe make some modifications that would would, you know, serve the neighborhood there well.
You mean multifamily?
Yeah.
Multifamily to the.
To the RCT. In that way, these little pockets could have some development by right for housing. You know?
For multifamily.
Multifamily, yeah.
Good idea.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Does anybody want to make a motion to um, rezone this to RCT?
Based on what Tamara said, how would that come about? Um, what is the?
So if this were rezoned to RCT, if city council, if this board made a recommendation to city council, city council approved it and changed it to RCT, it still would not allow for multifamily until we change the RTC zoning district to
Text amendment.
A text amendment to allow for multifamily. So that, that could be on the books for.
We just come around to it later.
We'd have to get to it at another meeting, right? Because it requires announced notices and things like that.
All right. And.
Uh, go ahead. Yeah, so um, there has been at various times, a number of discussions around uh, a variety of zoning text amendments, some of which included adding multifamily or adding missing middle to various zoning districts. One of the um, sort of tasks internally that staff has been working on is a uh, coalition of those ideas and the ones that we've sort of begun to investigate and then a little bit of work to prioritize. Uh, conceptually, what I would like to do um, is then take those to council and get a little buy-in. Uh, we can review those with the planning board ahead of time, but kind of because we have such a limited bandwidth for zoning text amendments and because we have discussed, you know, north of ten or fifteen of them, um, it would then allow us to include all of those. Get sort of counsel, yes, we would like to see these come to us um, as staff or city initiated zoning text amendments and then bring them back to the planning board to start sort of working our way through them. So I, what I would suggest is that we would include the RCT uh, missing middle or multifamily at a by right smaller level is probably something that we want to talk about more broadly, perhaps across the a number of zoning districts, uh, and that would facilitate our being able to do that. And, and probably very importantly, getting councils uh, interest in adopting those amendments.
So should that go ahead of us um, trying to address the issue in this district?
As, as far as a zoning text amendment, um, that is broadly applicable to the zoning ordinance in general, I, I'm, I'm suggesting that we would like as staff to proceed as, as I just sort of described.
Okay.
Add it to the list.
Yeah, add it to our list.
And wait for any rezoning. Just leave it.
So we're gonna wait.
Denying. Okay.
Okay, y'all. If nobody wants to make a motion, then.
No.
Now, this will still go to city council without our recommendation.
That's correct.
Okay. Alrighty, let's move on to the next item. Then before we start the next item on the agenda, we have a new member, Yolanda Robinson.
Welcome.
Glad to have you.
Did you bring cookies?
New member, we always bring cookies.
I left that out of your orientation email. Sorry. Uh, the next item is for a rezoning on upward crossing drive. Um, the applicants are Chris Quamir with Carolina Specialties Construction and Satise Patel with Upper Road Hospitality. The uh, parcels currently is in PCD. They're proposing to rezone it to CHMU Commercial Highway Mixed Use. It's a one and a half acre site and the regional activity center, uh, future land use designation. Uh, the area around the subject property is uh, transitioning, uh, contains a wide range of interstate oriented uses, uh, lodging, fast food, convenience stores uh, as well as recently approved multifamily uses and industrial uses. The parcel is zone PCD, planned commercial development. Uh, portion of that development has been um, has been built out, but other portions of it have not. And this is one of those portions that hasn't been built. Subject property is located on upward crossing drive, which is a private street with access to upward road. Um, property at the corner uh, uh, was recently rezoned to CHMU to allow for the Starbucks, which is under construction. Other, other, other recent rezonings have occurred on properties north of the site, which lay between I twenty six and South Allen Road. These properties include two PRD multifamily residential uses and uh, another uh, vacant land. Um, that was also recently annexed and rezoned to CHMU. Uh, the subject property is also located in the upward road planning district, which was adopted in two thousand and eleven along with the CHMU zoning district. Uh, in general, I'll just state this area is uh, is grow, rapidly growing and will continue to see growth uh, due to the relationship with the interstate, uh, uh, the interchange with I twenty six. Taking a look at the site, upper left photo, um, looking back towards upward road, that's upward crossing um, on the right. Uh, this is upward crossing uh, Boulevard, upward crossing drive, looking uh, north towards where there will be a future connection, um, that will uh, access the water leaf apartments, which is the PRD development I mentioned. The bottom left is uh, from the, from the site looking towards the interstate and the bottom right is from the center of the site, looking back towards the existing hotel cross upward crossing drive. I mentioned that it was part of a PCD, a planned commercial development. This was uh, what was, what was um, what shown on that plan is a retail store and a restaurant uh, that were not built and that plan has since uh, lost its rights. It's voided uh, because it did not, it went however long without being built. Um, so nothing can be built on that site without going through a C Z D process. The CHMU would allow by right development, uh, if approved. The future land use map, this entire area is designated as regional activity center and it's in an activity node. All parcels surrounding um, the uh, the areas share the same designation due to the proximity of the interchange with I twenty six and upward road. Um, I twenty six is classified as a freeway. Upper road is a boulevard. The uh, Henderson County twenty twenty future land use designation uh, for this property is community service center and the county's draft. And the county's draft twenty forty five cop plan designates this area as community center. In both cases, these designations represent large commercial nodes that serve a broad geographical area or geographic area. Um, I state that because this is outside of the ETJ. Um, it, it, as I mentioned, it's in the upward road planning area of the city, but it is covered under the Henderson County's future land use map. Subject parcel is also part of the upward road planning area, uh, which I mentioned previously. The, the purpose of that planning area is to manage growth outside the ETJ where uh, it was known that sewer service would be desired. So going through our criteria, the first is comprehensive plan consistency. In this case, the proposed zoning of CHMU is consistent with future land use designation. Of Regional Activity Center. It is located in a priority growth area, um. Population, housing, cultural and nat- cultural and historic resources, natural. I'm sorry, cultural and historic resources and community facilities chapter did not have any strategies or goals, the natural environmental resources. Um, states to encourage low impact development practices in stormwater management. The Water Resources Chapter echoes the same strategy and the Transportation and Circulation Chapter. Encourages mixed use pedestrian friendly development that reduces the need to drive between land uses and enhance key entrances within the city. The second criteria considered is compatibility. In this case, the area is transitioning to higher intensity uses. Interstate oriented businesses are present and will continue to expand. Opportunities for employment and housing are also increasing in this area. Um, changed, under changed conditions, the corridor along upward road is seen and will continue to see growth and development. The fourth criteria, public interest, uh, the CHMU zoning district contains design standards that help to ensure compatibility and quality development. The public facilities would be city services, upward crossing, as mentioned, is currently a private privately maintained. Upward road is a boulevard. Um, and is maintained uh by NCDOT. The effect on natural environment, in this case, the site has been previously disturbed and contains no mature trees nor envi- environmentally sensitive. Features. And with this, we have a draft comprehensive uh plan consistency statement. Uh, for, for you to consider as well as rationale for approval. And rationale for denial. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Any questions for staff? Okay, and the, the PHMU designation, that's, that's the zoning district that the city established for that upward road corridor.
That's correct.
Thank you. All right, is the applicant here and would like, they like to speak? That makes it easy. Um, public comments, let's go ahead and open up public comments. Anybody in the room that wants to talk about. Um, right there at upward road in the interstate. Everybody wants to talk about Greenville Highway, don't they? Well, we're glad you're here. We're glad you're here. Um, okay, anybody on the Zoom call? Raise your hand if you'd like to speak.
No one on the Zoom call, mister.
Okay. We'll go ahead and close public comment and have some discussion amongst ourselves here. What are we thinking?
It, it seems like the logical thing to do, yeah.
I mean, that, that zoning district takes into consideration the interstate, the upward road development. It has design standards, I mean, it's very compatible with what's going on out there. All right, do we have a motion?
I make a motion, we recommend, recommending approval. Uh, I move planning board recommend city council adopt an ordinance amending the official zoning map. The city of Hendersonville changing the zoning designation of the subject property pin number nine five eight eight dash two one dash. Nine one one three from PCD, that's planned commercial development. Conditional zoning district, the CHMU, which is Commercial Highway Mixed Use, based on the following. Number one, petition is found to be consistent, city Henderson. The city of Hendersonville two thirty comprehensive plan, based on the information from the staff analysis and the public hearing and because one. Future land use designation of Regional Activity Center recommends restaurants and community regional services as primary land uses. And the location of the subject property aligns with the goals and strategies of LU dash nine. Two, we find this petition be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information from the staff analysis. And the public hearing and because one, CHMU zoning district features design standards. Two, CHMU zoning district permits a mix of uses, including those that are consistent with the interstate oriented development occurring. In this area and three, the subject property is located in a priority growth area.
Hey, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay, we have a second by Barbara, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously as well. We've got some consensus going on here today.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm suspecting the next item may take a few minutes, but I suggest a five minute stretch break beforehand.
We'll take a, um, since we.
Or even two minutes.
Like three minutes.
You got it.
How about two minutes and twenty two seconds?
Done.
A little more, so folks out, out in the audience there can hear.
First is turned off. You gotta push the button.
Even on red, my mouth was picking up at him.
Ready?
Yes, we are ready for 1202 Greenville Highway.
Yes, this third presentation tonight is for a conditional rezoning for a parcel just under seven acres off of Greenville Highway. Currently zoned Greenville Highway mixed use. The Lock Seven Development Team and Ferguson property owners are proposing to rezone it to Greenville. Greenville Highway Mixed Use Conditional Zoning District. It is a multifamily project consisting of one hundred and sixty-five units. Because that exceeds our fifty unit threshold, that is what requires that it goes through the conditional zoning process. We have that automatic trigger for projects that are over fifty units. If they exceed that number, then they have to go through a conditional rezoning, which is a site-specific rezoning. And the rezoning will be tied to the site plan that will be presented tonight. And if approved, it would be tied to that site plan. The future land use designation is split on this parcel, and we'll get into that in a little more detail. Taking a look at the site, upper left photo is, tree line is behind me in that photograph. And then Greenville Highway is just past that tree line. So, and this is looking across an opening down to a low area. And then the land rises again where there's an existing vacant single-family home. So kind of in the center of this site, you have some drainage and a wet area across the middle. Upper right picture is looking back towards town with Greenville Highway on the left. And that clearing that I was just describing is on the right and the tree line is, is in the center of the photograph. The bottom left picture is a wetlands where a creek, a stream on the northern corner of the property flows through here. And there's a low-lying area that stays wet. And then on the bottom right is kind of a typical view of the center of the site. Taking a look at the site plan. This depicts the one hundred and sixty-five residential units on approximately seven acres, which is a density of twenty-four units per acre. There are eleven three-story apartment buildings, a clubhouse and a pool for just over a total of two hundred and seventy-three thousand square feet of gross floor area. With the exception of the clubhouse, the buildings are forty-two feet. That is a, an update from the staff report where it stated that they, they've updated their site plan to say that the, the max height would be forty-two feet rather than forty-five feet. The site plan also shows the drives, the sidewalks and the two hundred and fourteen proposed parking spaces, which equates to one point three spaces per unit. There is forty percent open space on the site and ten percent common space. I mentioned that there is a creek. There's, they're showing a stream buffer associated with that creek in the northern corner. And there's also pedestrian connection right here out to Garden Lane that is shown. The site plan was reviewed by the Development Review Committee, the DRC. The details of that review were in the staff report, and I'm going to provide a summary. The Community Development Department, our comments were mostly resolved or addressed by the developers' conditions. With the exception of clarifying the twelve-by-forty loading zone area and clarification around the use of tree credits. Just not a hundred percent sure if tree credits are being utilized and how many, if so, and what the total plantings would be. So that'll need clarification. Planting staff is also initiating condition on this project for the dedication of right-of-way along the frontage of Greenville Highway, fifty feet from the center line. Technically, this is not a condition, but a standard of the zoning code. However, having, having it discussed as a condition was considered the best way to make sure it was considered and discussed at this stage in the development review process. The stormwater administrator had two conditions related to mitigating the impact of development as it relates to stormwater. And I'll get into those conditions. The Public Works Director, Fire Marshal, City Engineer, Flood Plane Administrator, Water Sewer Department and Henderson County Soil and Erosion Control each reviewed the project. Offered comments that were resolved or will be at final site plan. The city's transportation consultant and NC DOT staffer reviewed the TIA Transportation Impact Analysis. The city's transportation consultant made the following recommendations. The access two should be configured in a way that eliminates the offset left arrangement with the Hendersonville Family Dental. This configuration should be agreed upon by NC DOT and the City of Hendersonville. So that would involve aligning this access point with the driveway across the street rather than having them offset. And should access two not be able to be configured in an acceptable manner that removes the overlapping left turns into the site and the family. Hendersonville Family Dentist Office, the driveway should be converted to a right-in, right-out. Should a right-in, right-out be implemented at access two? The relocated left turns from access two to access one would be based on a review of turn lane warrants. Justify the installation of a left turn lane into the site at access one with twenty-five feet of storage. Should a turn lane be installed, it should be designed in accordance with NC DOT guidelines. So the first slide here in review of the conditions, there were, there were no conditions that the developer offered that exceeded the city's standards. The three, one, two, three conditions that are listed where there is some level of relief being requested from the city's standards. Primarily, it applies to number one, where instead of a three-inch caliper tree and, and I believe a two, two-inch caliper tree that are required for plantings in common space and plantings in the open space. They've asked to reduce that caliper size, which is a cost savings for the developer. There is, there have been studies that show that there are benefits to planting smaller trees and that there are benefits, benefits to planting the larger caliber trees. But it, there is not really consensus on the research. This was brought back to Tree Board. Tree Board did make a recommendation that, that was acceptable or was accepting of this condition. So that would grant relief from the city's zoning code. The second one, that no street trees be provided on other street frontages. That's, there's not really a requirement other than on Greenville Highway. So they threw that in there just to clarify that they wouldn't be planting street trees on other streets, but there aren't any other street frontages that would require that. The not constructing sidewalk on Garden Lane or Hidden Treasure Lane. We, we've got a kind of a counter to that, that if they are not going to construct sidewalks on those anywhere that it'd be required, that they would then pay the fee in lieu, which is, is what our zoning code has in place to offset the when you do not actually construct the sidewalks, you can pay a fee in lieu. So we've got that mentioned as well. The Tree Board had conditions that they recommended that were either agreed to by the developer or modified by the developer. But then the modified language was presented to, back to the Tree Board, just went to Tree Board twice. And then they were deemed to be agreeable by the Tree Board as well, so. The, these conditions continue from the Tree Board. Again, agreed to or, I'm, I, I do not believe the Tree Board made it clear that, that it was acceptable in their eyes that the, the no disturbance zone around the wetlands be reduced from forty feet to twenty feet. They didn't really make a specific comment on that. Tree Warded or initially recommended forty feet. The site plan that they've shown doesn't accommodate that, but does accommodate a twenty-foot buffer around the wetlands. The stormwater administrator proposed conditions ten and eleven to address drainage on the site. So they've agreed to one of those four options. Yeah, completing, so the, the recommendation is to complete one of the four alternatives for addressing some of the, the largest concerns related to drainage on the site, A, B, C, and D. So the specifics of those, which one of those would be utilized is, is not determined at this stage, but it would be agreed to at the final site plan stage. And then the developers also agreed to retain a twenty-five-year, twenty-four-hour storm as opposed to the, the minimum standard, which is a ten-year storm, according to our stormwater ordinance. And then lastly, I mentioned the fee in lieu. If, if we are waiving the required sidewalks, then the developer should still be required to pay the fee in lieu. And that is not, the developer has not added that to their list of conditions yet. I mentioned this as well, due to Greenville Highway having been identified as a corridor needing improvement and the French Broad River NPO Comprehensive Transportation Plan. And in accordance with section six fifteen of the zoning code, the developer shall dedicate right-of-way from property line to property line, fifty feet from the Sereneline of Greenville Highway in order to accommodate future improvements. And section six fifteen of the zoning code states that if it's been identified on these, on the comprehensive transportation plan, then that dedication is required. And then I mentioned the city transportation consultant's recommendations. That is also a condition that the city is initiating, that the developer agreed to the, the improvements along at the access points. This project went at its neighborhood compatibility meeting back in December. It was heavily attended, very lengthy conversation covering a wide range of topics, including the impact to this, the forested land. The drainage concerns which have been touched on, incompatibility of the proposed density adjacent to the R fifteen single-family neighborhood. Just the general scale of the buildings, the height and the character along Greenville Highway, mostly you know, one and two-story buildings on Greenville Highway. The increased traffic congestion, the worsening cut-through traffic, low water pressure in this area, and just additional study is needed. Taking a look at the current land use, the subject property is currently zoned highway, Greenville Highway mixed use. Length of the western boundary fronts along Greenville Highway, which is considered a major thoroughfare. Parcels fronting along this corridor are primarily zoned Greenville Highway mixed use. There's a mix of residential, retail, restaurant and professional services present along this corridor along with, with varying levels of intensity. While there are a mix of uses, the corridor has a unique local character, partially due to the lack of chain stores with a few exceptions. Parcels abutting the property to the northeast and southeast are zoned R fifteen. This is the low-density zoning that refers to the Brooklyn, Brookdale neighborhood. A single-family neighborhood primarily constructed during the nineteen fifty's, sixty's and seventy's with some homes built earlier in the twentieth century. The subject property is designated as high-intensity neighborhood and medium-intensity neighborhood. I mentioned that it is split as a split designation. As you come off of Greenville Highway, it transitions from high intensity to medium intensity. The two future land use designations for the subject property are also dominant designations throughout the vicinity of the subject property. The high-intensity neighborhood stretches along both sides of Greenville Highway, while the medium-intensity designation is found primarily in the Brooklyn residential area. And it, which is set back from and situated between Greenville Highway and Spartanburg Highway. Traveling north on Greenville Highway, the subject property is located three-quarters of a mile or about a fifteen-minute walk from an activity node at South Main Street and Church at the southern edge of downtown. The area contains a mix of commercial uses, including four supermarkets. The subject property is also located one mile from the activity node associated with the Spartanburg Highway at the intersection of Brooklyn and Shepherd Street. As intersections with Brooklyn and Shepherd. The property fronts on Greenville Highway designated as a major thoroughfare, as I mentioned, designated as needing improvements on the comprehensive transportation plan. So looking at the first criteria for comprehensive plan consistency, I mentioned the split designations. While the project is consistent with the, the high-intensity neighborhood designation, there are key aspects of the, of the medium-intensity designation that the proposal is not consistent with. Those include the primary recommended land use of single-family attached and detached houses. The recommended density of two to eight units per acre and the recommendation for at least sixty percent open space. That said, the proposal is consistent with medium-intensity neighborhoods call for limited multifamily along roadways designated as major thoroughfares. The site is split, also split between priority infill area and preservation and enhancement areas, split along the same line as identified in the development opportunities and growth management maps. The population and housing chapter has a few strategies, including develop design guidelines for infill development. Promote installation of street trees through private redevelopment. It goes on to state, encourage the provision of affordable housing units in new developments. Encourage mixed land use patterns that place residents within walking distance of services. The natural and environmental resources chapter has a number of relevant strategies, including preserve environmentally sensitive areas in order to protect life and property from natural hazards. Protect water resources and preserve natural habitat. Protect land adjacents, adjacent to streams. Encourage restoration of natural habitat and drainage patterns in developed areas. Continuously assess development and preservation efforts within the natural resources and agricultural on the future land use map. Provide a variety of quality open space distributed equally throughout Hendersonville that can be used for recreation opportunities and, and aesthetic enhancements. Encourage clustered development that preserves open space while allowing a return on investment. Promote preservation of woodlands. Promote the location and design of open space areas within development so that they can contribute to and link individual homes to the city's green infrastructure network. Enable and encourage low-impact development practices and stormwater management. There were no goals and strategies specifically in the cultural and historic resources chapter. But I will note that the property is less than a quarter mile from a locally designated historic landmark, the Brooklyn Charles Edmonds Den House at two ninety-nine Balsam Road. Should also be noted that the surrounding residential area is a mix of pre and post-World War II early suburban development. The community facilities chapter had no relevant goals. The water resources chapter talks about controlling post-construction runoff through the city's stormwater regulations. Preventing development of floodplains and stream corridors in order to preserve natural drainage patterns and improve quality of stormwater runoff. Enable and encourage low-impact development practices in stormwater management. The transportation and circulation chapter states to develop a multimodal transportation system that encourages pedestrian and bicycle usage. Encourage mixed-use pedestrian-friendly development. Identify and prioritize needed pedestrian connections within the community. Encourage pedestrian connections between dead-end streets and adjacent neighborhoods. Preserve and expand the public greenway system as a core component of the bicycle and pedestrian transportation system. The second criteria is compatibility. In this case, this is a heavily wooded lot with a dilapidated home on it, adjacent to a single-family neighborhood. The, the density of the existing neighborhood is one point seven-three units per acre. The density of the proposed project is twenty-four units per acre. The project site fronts a major thoroughfare. All access is provided by the major thoroughfare. The third criteria is change conditions. Currently, the only significant recent change have been the two single-family homes built to the rear of the property. Eighty units were approved, apartment units were approved at the corner of Chadwick Avenue and Greenville Highway in March of two thousand and twenty-two, though we have not received a final site plan for that project. Staff is anticipating additional multifamily residential applications in vicinity of the subject property. The fourth criteria to consider is public interest. If approved, this project will bring the total number of recently approved rental units to two thousand one hundred and one units. The, and I got some additional numbers on the screen there. The fifth criteria is public facilities. This would be surged by city services. Greenville Highway is NC DOT. Effect on natural environment. Sixty-two percent of the trees on the site are proposed to be removed. I mentioned the clarification that's needed for the tree credits to confirm if one hundred and one tree credits are being utilized from the remaining thirty-eight percent of the existing trees proposed to be preserved. Two streams are located on the site, running through the center of the site is an ephemeral stream that is supposed to be piped. Creek in the north corner and its associated wetlands is proposed to be buffered and remain undisturbed within the required thirty feet. And no buildings placed in the twenty-foot transition zone. The developers also agreed to a twenty-foot wetlands buffer. In considering all of this, this analysis, staff has drafted two comprehensive plan consistency statements. The following is a, a language for consistency statement finding the petition consistent. And so it references the, both the high-intensity and medium-intensity neighborhood designations. Because it's located on a major thoroughfare. And then there's some rationale for approval. And then there's also, we've drafted, if you're, you know, going to make a motion for denial, we've drafted a comprehensive plan consistency statement, finding it inconsistent. Primarily due to the, not aligning with some of the, the goals and strategies of the medium-intensity neighborhood. And we have some rationale for denial as well. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Okay, any questions for city staff? Go ahead, Neil.
Matt, refresh my memory, please. What could be done with this parcel by right today?
A wide range of, of uses, because it is a mixed-use district, so commercial and residential, multifamily by right. But you, you get up to that fifty-unit threshold and the fifty thousand gross floor area square feet threshold, and then it kicks it into conditional zoning. So anything under those thresholds that is permitted in those zoning districts, which is a, a good range of commercial uses and multifamily and single-family duplexes, townhomes, all that.
Thank you.
I have a question. If, if they were to subdivide the parcel and do under fifty in phases, does it kick in anyway? The, the public, I mean, at what point do they have to, would they get to buy right?
Yeah. If it was all in common ownership, when they exceeded, this is, and you may help me out here, when they exceeded that fifty, that would then push it past that threshold and, and the entire, everything that was in common ownership would have to be considered through a C Z D process. There's a section in our, in our zoning ordinance that essentially tie, if, if, if you're you know, neighboring parcels that are owned in common ownership and there's development proposed for both, but you're, you know, the developer's saying, well, this is a separate. Entity, yes, yeah, got the same managing member, that kind of thing, kind of covered that with our zoning code says, no, that, those need to be considered together as one project.
But even though you said that it was split by the, the land use, it is all one parcel and it all is all zoned Greenville Highway.
That's correct. The future land use is.
Future land use is where it's split.
Essentially, and, and future land use designations are intended to be more broad brush. That's why it's not following a parcel line. They're not, it, it's not intended to say this parcel is supposed to be exactly this thing. It's more of a general vision. I think that the vision was that within a certain proximity to the corridor, we're going to have higher density, higher intensity uses. As we move away from that corridor, it is intended that those intensity and density transitions down, stair steps down. And so this parcel happens to be pretty deep, so it kind of, it got caught with, with having portions of it in that transition area. But, you know, it also fronts Greenville Highway, accesses from Greenville Highway, so.
Matt, would you go back to the slide that shows the number of apartment, housing units? There it is. Just want to read that fast, please.
To your question, there's also language in the zoning code that essentially spells out when you, when you've got, you know, an existing development and a new development is proposed, say it's a single building and it's going from, it's forty-eight thousand and they want to do a five thousand square foot addition. Goes over that five thousand number. And five thousand square feet would also exceed ten percent of the total existing square footage. So if it stays under ten percent of an existing development, then it can be done administratively. If it exceeds ten percent of the size and jumps to a new threshold for development review, it has to follow that review. And so fifty thousand means it's going to city council. So fifty units would be the same, same kind of.
And then, and then the housing units that you show up there, the, we, we saw a whole lot of site plans that came in that were going for the funding. What's it, housing?
Tax credits.
And, and they got approved, but the chances are because they didn't get the tax credits that they're not really going to get built, right?
That would be correct. They could, in theory, if they're not, if they're not a market rate developer, they could, in theory, sell that property to a market rate developer that wasn't going to do the low-income housing tax credits. And they would have, they'd have the ability to build that same site plan. Some of those had a condition that it had to be affordable.
Right.
They would have to do that too, so.
Yeah. I was just wondering if that number did, wasn't sort of generous to twenty-eight.
Yeah, that is built in it. That's, that's a great point. There's a chunk in there that is that.
Okay.
Any other question?
And, and some may not get built for other reasons.
Peter, you got a question. I can tell.
Yeah, I mean, I've lived on Greenville Highway down the street for twenty-odd years, he's on the property. One of the rental villages down the street. And when they originally made Greenville Highway mixed use, they sliced it two straight lines down either side of it. And that cut everybody's properties in chunks, you know, made them slice them in half. And now we come back and I'm looking at this again. I'm, I can't figure out why this is not all Greenville Highway mixed use, or maybe it isn't, I'm, I'm not hearing correctly. Is it all Greenville Highway mixed use?
There are some spots where there are some P C Ds in there.
Okay.
Some planned commercial developments, so those may have come in afterwards and whatever they wanted, the layout they wanted, made more sense for them to rezone to that use. Or they may have been in place prior to the Greenville Highway and not been part of that rezoning. And then there's a couple that were rezoned to special uses. There's a C three that kind of breaks it up.
Ace Hardware was a special use.
Was that?
Was your question specific to the parcel?
Yeah.
Because this entire parcel is zoned Greenville Highway.
This parcel is all. On the comp plan, Peter, it's split. On the comp plan, land use map.
So this is the zoning.
That clarifies that.
There you go.
Thank you.
Zoning is all one Greenville Highway and then the future land use gets.
So this application was made before we had a lighting ordinance that would affect multifamily. So if we wanted the lighting ordinance to affect this property, that would have to be a condition.
The, yeah, the developer could choose to not meet the lighting ordinance. They have a choice because they applied prior to that becoming adopted. They could choose to follow the lighting ordinance or choose to follow the, the ordinance that was in place prior to the adoption of the lighting ordinance, which was minimal. So that is called, yeah.
This board wanted, wanted the project to follow the lighting ordinance, it would have to be a condition.
That would be the cleanest way to ensure that, that, and. That would be the, uh, um, cleanest way to ensure that, that, and, and is determined. Basically have the developer make that decision. They would abide by that condition or not.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, Garden Lane, is that maintained by, is, is that a private road maintained by community? Is it under the jurisdiction of the city? Where do those roads fall in?
That is a N C D O T right-of-way that has a, well, actually, I don't know that that's accurate. I, it was, I, the, the status of that right-of-way, I am unclear on. I believe there is ongoing research as to, um, the status of that right-of-way. We've been in context with the city attorney. It is current of Garden Lane from Carousel from Carousel to the south to Hidden Treasure Lane, that segment. And there are two parcels that were created. This triangle was subdivided and a single family home was built on each parcel. And essentially, you know, from there down was a driveway was installed, private, privately built, privately maintained in a ri- in a public right-of-way of some sort. Whether it was intended to be a city right-of-way or N C D O T right-of-way, that has been kind of forwarded on to the city attorney, um, in relationship to, um, some issues related to drainage and some of the work that was done within that right-of-way as part of the development of those two single-family homes. A berm was put in at the end of the right-of-way, and so that's, uh, a- any issues related to that or enforcement, um, or, uh, violations, uh, associated with work in the right-of-way or under review.
So regarding that, what you just said, is it considered public? As a public.
I'll, I'll jump in here. So the, the road Garden Lane after it intersects with Carousel Lane and beyond is not a city-maintained street.
So it is private.
It is private.
The community is responsible to maintain it.
I don't know who's responsible to maintain it, but it's not the ci- it's not a city street. It's not a part of our Powellville city street system.
Okay, so in relationship to that comment regarding the sidewalk, if it is unknown, private or public, so the sidewalk would be a moot point unless it was city-owned.
Yeah, I don't see how the city can require a sidewalk on, on a, or a payment in lieu on a.
Sidewalk or a lean, so.
So I understand the question you're asking. There are portions of Garden Lane that, but the, the property that are maintained by the city. And I guess what I would note just is that that would be the type of detail that would be determined at final site plan.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, um, is the applicant here and would they like to speak? If you could try and, um, limit your presentation to about twenty minutes, fifteen, twenty minutes, that'd be great.
Certainly, I think that we have, uh, some members of the Lock Seven team on, uh, on the, the Zoom portion of that. My name is Derek Allen.
They want to be unmuted?
Uh, they, they will. They'll, uh, they'll come, uh, right after me in terms of presentations that they like to introduce. We have a couple of additional conditions we'd like to add, one of which addresses affordable housing with an affordable housing commitment. Um, so I know they want to, to be front and center on that. Um, I'll introduce myself. My name is Derek Allen. I'm a land use attorney. I practice in Asheville at Twenty Town Mountain Road at Allen Stoll and Kilborn. Um, I have Warren Sugg with me tonight. He's from Civil Design Concepts. He's the site engineer. Uh, David Gorman and Eric Maduski from Lock Seven are on, uh, the Zoom. Um, and we're here to present this project to you. I think that I'll start really with, uh, kind of where we ended up, and that is addressing, um, something that is important to western North Carolina, which is, uh, addressing what is a housing crisis. Uh, there's no doubt about it. Uh, the questions about, uh, these projects that have been approved but not yet built is real. Um, it's real because tax credits don't always go through. It's real because, uh, interest rates have changed, building costs have gone up, and so these projects are starting to sit there and get sold or not built. And so just because it's been approved doesn't mean it's been built. If it hasn't been built, it's not helping solve the problem. Um, the affordable housing issue, uh, is really two big things. One is, uh, the affordable housing part in terms of how much it costs. The other, and the one that, that maybe, uh, this moves the needle most on is providing diverse housing stock in these areas that we call the missing middle. Uh, this is really the perfect kind of property here that is in the middle of a major thoroughfare. It's got access to good commercial corridors. Uh, it's adjacent to a residential area and it ends up providing its own kind of buffer from the major thoroughfare along that highway there, back to the existing single-family residential. Um, the, the question was asked about sidewalks and the neighbors have asked us not to put sidewalks in the back and we have the, the private road issue. In addition to that, there is, uh, a stream buffer and environmental concerns on the top corner on the back there. Um, I'm not sure about the, the deed and lieu. I'm not sure it makes a lot of sense. But I do know that this project has been oriented, uh, both by design, um, by the future land use map, uh, by neighbor request, so that the most intense part of it, and it's facing outward onto Greenville Highway, um, and that, that makes sense. All along, uh, this process from our initial, uh, pre-application conference to our neighbor meeting, to the tree board meeting, to working with planning staff, uh, we've been asked and, and to address different concerns. Uh, we've had, tried to, uh, introduce those as conditions. Uh, a lot of those come through as city-initiated conditions, but they're asks of us or suggestions of us that we then incorporate. I believe by the time we get to city council next month that we will have included as conditions or resolved every single staff comment that's out there. We've also addressed a lot of those neighbor comments and tree board comments, et cetera. Um, we think it's a good project. We think this is the right place for it. Uh, I would like to introduce Eric now, if he can, uh, unmute or raise his hand. Um, I know that he has, uh, some materials. I'm not sure how he's gonna share his screen. Is that doable from your side?
Let me see. This will stop. I believe I can share it. Let me try to pull it up right now. How's that? Can everybody see the presentation and hear me okay?
Perfect. Thank you, Eric.
Awesome. Thank you, Derek. And good afternoon, everyone. My name is Eric Mioduski. I'm a development associate with Lock Seven Development. And we're the applicant behind the conditional rezoning of twelve oh two Greenville Highway. I want to thank you all for your time and giving me the opportunity to share more information about the project. I promise I will get through this in maybe a little over five minutes as to not take up too much of everyone's time. Matt did a great job of presenting a lot of details, so I will do my best to not repeat what he's already covered. So jumping right into it with a quick company introduction, Lock Seven was founded sixteen years ago. We have offices in North Carolina as well as Washington, D.C. We focus on residential development and specialize in multifamily. And we've previously developed both market rate and affordable housing, and we target markets experiencing housing shortages. So there's a ton of reasons we like Hendersonville. Uh, a couple of the big ones are that we like the authentic downtown with the Main Street. All the cool local shops, restaurants and museums is really just a very aesthetically pleasing place to be. There's a strong sense of community with frequent, um, festivals and events put on by the city. The schools are highly rated. It's an area that's experiencing population growth. Um, there is strong evidence that there's a shortage of housing and we have projects under development in Arden as well as Weaverville, so that shows that we're committed to this market overall and we're looking forward to being a part of it for years to come. So we're very excited for this project, uh, particularly and believe it should be recommended for approval because the apartment community will address a shortage of housing in Hendersonville, not only just market rate housing, but also affordable housing and a meaningful supply of housing at that. Um, in a location that's very close to the downtown. Also, by redeveloping the site, it will improve the sidewalk infrastructure along Greenville Highway and promote walking and biking, um, in this area, uh, that's close to activity centers and the Acusta Trail, so that's, that's big for us, allowing more people to live within easy proximity to the Acusta Trail is something that we consider a win. We've also thoughtfully designed the site to preserve existing trees as well as accommodate the planting of new ones. So we really focused on striking a balance between building, um, a meaningful supply of well-located housing as well as preserving nature and have really used that as a guiding principle throughout the process. And finally, we believe the project aligns with the twenty thirty comprehensive plan as well as the Greenville Highway mixed-use zoning. This is just a quick timeline of where we've been in the process. So we started with the pre-application meeting on October third, held our neighborhood compatibility meeting as well as a follow-up to that. We've been through two site plan submissions, which takes us to today's planning board, um, and plan to be at next month's city council. So Matt covered a lot of these details, but very quickly, what we're proposing is a hundred and sixty-five apartment units uh, in three-story buildings with footprints of less than twelve thousand square feet. So we are not requesting any conditions as it relates to the building standards set forth by the Greenville Highway mixed-use. The project will include walking trails, green space, a pool as well as a clubhouse and feature bike parking, electric vehicle charging stations. Um, we will be working with the grade as much as possible and using retaining walls where necessary to preserve trees as well as provide a privacy buffer to the neighboring homes. Um, we will be proposing an affordable housing condition that I'll get more into on the next slide. And then, like Matt said, we have conducted the T I A that's been reviewed by the town staff as well as their consultants. So the purported, the proposed affordable housing condition is that ten percent of the units be designated to affordable, uh, for those making eighty percent A M I or less. The affordable units may include a variety of unit types and sizes. And if the affordable units do not lease within ninety days, the unit should be available to market rate tenants as well. So here is our original site plan, um, the first of two, which went to staff on January sixth. The key comments that we got back along with some technical, um, site plan comments were to consider reducing the unit count, look into aligning the drive aisle with the property across the street as well as identify and include a list of all the trees on site to help with the preservation plan. So here is the revised site plan. The big updates to this one are that we reduced the unit count from a hundred and eighty-five to a hundred and sixty-five, which in turn increased the parking ratio from one point two to one point three. We also moved and reduced the size of the clubhouse to preserve the mature trees on the lot. Um, and we also increased the overall number of trees and shrubs to planted on the site, so if I remember correctly, I believe we added an additional thirty trees as well as close to a hundred and fifty shrubs. As far as the community benefits, this project will provide high-quality thoughtful missing-middle housing close to the downtown and activity centers. It gives more people the chance to walk and bike to the nearby retail and offices, which can reduce traffic. It's close to the Acusta Trail, which I had touched on previously. Um, the increased economic activity of the new residents will support businesses in the area. The expected project cost will directly benefit local contractors and subcontractors.
I was working on it.
Hey, Eric, we lost your connection. Warren, do you want me to bring up your site plan?
Yeah, if you would. And if Eric comes back, I'll, I'll sit down and.
Yeah, he's got the ability to, uh, start talking, uh.
Okay, I'm Warren Sugg with Civil Design Concepts, we're a civil engineer firm here in, uh, Asheville. Uh, been before you a few times. Happy to be back again tonight. Um, you've heard a lot. I don't want to bore with more numbers, but I do want to touch on a couple of very specific things that we heard uh, throughout the process to this point. We've tried to really touch on, we've spent a lot of, uh, meetings and hours. Um, thank you to staff for, for sitting with us for several of those meetings. Um, early on, we knew that stormwater and flooding was a, a major thing that we knew about, plus the community knew about. So we not only went out in the field and did some investigation on our own, but we actually talked with, uh, the city, uh, stormwater staff, city planning, started to understand, uh, some past history of some of the pipes to the north, uh, west side of the site. Uh, some of those may have failed in some people's, uh, yards and along their property lines. Some of those folks may have decided to put in some pipes on their own that have changed, um, the level of which water can, can. So that being said, some of these waters actually back up because of some, uh, some ongoing stormwater issues and you see in the conditions, uh, a, a desire and an ability to try to help remedy that. Some of that's off of our property, which, which means those neighbors would have to, to actually allow us to be on their land, uh, to make those remedies. But there are some, some nice ways that some of these, um, standing waters can be, uh, helped. A few other things, we did talk about trying to get as much of the stormwater to actually go to Greenville Highway to minimize what's happening back there to the north and to the, uh, northwest. So we've done that. We've made sure that the, uh, the storm tech system, which is a below-ground storm system that does go to that direction, will be designed to the twenty-five-year storm, which is above and beyond, uh, the city's, um, rules. Uh, touched on the traffic stuff just a little bit. We do have the access point that's to the northwest. Uh, certainly can align that. That's not a, uh, necessarily an issue and we, we certainly can do it. It will, uh, it will remove a few more trees because there are a few trees that are right there as it goes in. And that driveway would have a little bit of a, when you turn in, a, a quick turn back, um, just to kind of fit. I, as long as D O T and the city are okay with that alignment and that, uh, a couple more trees being removed, I don't think it's an issue from a site planning perspective. Um, with that, I'll just, you know, answer any questions that you have of me.
Okay, um, any questions? Go ahead.
It looks like the site drops about sixteen feet from front to back. Um, is there, are you gonna stagger the slab elevation to drop the buildings down to the back to be more compatible to the neighborhood?
So what's happening there is you do have quite a few rolls in it. There's actually a low spot that represents, uh, which one's the highlight button, the top one? So there's kind of a low, uh, ditch that goes right through here. In fact, you can see some of the standing water wetland that's here. That kind of conveys this direction. So it goes high from a knoll that's right here, goes down low, then comes back up and then it starts going low again as you get to the, uh, to the stream in the back. So our intent would be to try to obviously fill in that low area in the middle to try to equalize building, parking, building, so there shouldn't be drastic grade changes. We physically just can't. You can't have steps for, for ADA considerations and other things. We do have a few walls that were spoken of earlier to both help, um, preserve some additional trees to help that grade from, from going out further on a cut slope or filled slope, um, but it also helps us to get that pad where everything can kind of rate, relate to one another.
Any other question? I do have a question about building G. Um, it's seventy, it's listed as seventy feet by a hundred and seventy-six feet, which, um, is a little over twelve thousand square feet. And in the presentation, of course, the Greenville Highway mixed-use district doesn't allow for anything larger than twelve thousand square feet. But it's that front, it would be the, the southwest building right there, yeah.
Right here.
Yeah.
Yep. So you'll notice that I have very boxy boxes there. The architect, as they further define this, will have several ins and outs of all their, uh, balconies, lowest level, top level, all that. And as that further design happens, they recognize that they can't go past twelve thousand square foot. So we've tried to make a representation that, um, doesn't exceed where we're, you know, planning on going, but we reckon.
Where you have bump outs and cuts and things like.
So what we've shown you is the worst-case scenario of how it bumps out, but reality is there's many places where it will bump in and have undulations.
So the footprint does, doesn't include anything that doesn't get put inside the building? Is that, is that the way we calculate a footprint?
Right.
If it's not inside the building, it's not part of the.
Yeah, that, that's.
Offsets and things, you would have to actually do calculations.
It's, it's the building pad.
Building pad, right, yeah. Okay. Any other questions?
You're very close on that G and the one on the far end corner. You're kind of kissing that property right there.
Those are setbacks, actually. Those are not property lines.
No, but, well, the one in the front, you're kissing the setback. Is it, um, the one, gee, the one building we were talking at? So you still meet the setback requirement?
Yes, ma'am.
And are all the parking lots, uh, blocked from view from? And are all the parking lots uh blocked from view from public street?
They are, and and one of the really interesting things um for the architects in the room is. It actually has below gray or below building parking. You'll see the gray ones there within it. So it's a really interesting way that that's part of the parking lot, part of the parking. But it it naturally hides those and you'll notice that all of those are kind of interior. Um. So I I really like it, not architect, but it's it's a great design to do that way. It also takes everything and kind of condenses it. We've got. Um, pretty much in all four sizes where the tree um preservation is. We do have a few trees on the inside that are preserved as well, but we try to really push. Everything to the center.
And where is all your open space?
Open space, can you go to L one oh one? That's fine. I will point to it. So you have open space that is in this area here. You have open space that's all around the clubhouse, the pool area. Uh, let me see here, you have. Open space that surround, there's um leasing and and other spaces that are inside of here. So. Pretty much all of this area here plus this area back here. We, then we also have preservation that's along this edge. Along the front edge and then along this edge, you can see that on the. L one oh one sheet. And if you guys don't have that sheet, it's part of your small package. Um, but I'm happy to let y'all have it as well.
So is, and have you met the requirement amount percentage for open space?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, and our data block and and graphically shown on there as well with the square footages.
Can we discuss, so can we go over the affordable component again? You said ten percent, which would be seventeen units?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Eric or Derek talk to you about it.
I think Eric is back on.
Yeah, and so sorry about that, everyone. My internet cut out. Um, luckily I was speaking fast and got through most of what I was gonna cover, but. I do apologize for dropping off there. Um, so I'm, I'm, I am available to field any questions.
Yeah, the affordable, the affordable component, can you go over that again real quickly?
Yeah, so what what we're proposing is ten percent of the units to be designated as affordable for those making eighty percent A M I or less. Um, and so ten percent, you know, obviously that gets us to what sixteen point five. So whether it would be, you know, sixteen or seventeen units. Um, that is what is currently proposed and. You know, I I do want to mention that this is kind of the framework that we're proposing. We are more than happy to kind of. Sit down with city staff, members of the planning board, uh meet with members of the council and and really. Refine this plan, but we did want to make it clear that we are willing to offer a certain percentage of affordable units.
But you, you um, earlier you mentioned some specifics. And you just.
Yeah, he did eighty percent of the A M I.
Right, but there were more, there was something else. If they didn't get rented up within a certain period.
Ninety days.
They didn't rent up within ninety days.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so. Willing to, in perpetuity, is this in perpetuity or?
So the 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 idea would probably be to start with ten year, that's, that's kind of what we've seen with other developers that have gone through this process in Hendersonville. Um, and just to speak on the whole ninety day thing, um, that's largely required by lenders. So what what they're scared of is that they don't want um basically ten percent of the units to have. Um, to end up sitting vacant for however long it takes to fill them. So. Obviously, in in an area like Hendersonville, which has, you know, a housing shortage and probably even more demand for affordable housing. I really would not expect um a unit to ever sit for more than ninety days, but. Again, that's kind of just language that the lenders require so they can protect themselves.
Okay, and you mentioned um E V charging stations. How many, they, how, out of the two hundred some odd spaces?
You know, that's another thing that we haven't quite gotten to. Usually, property managers that we work with have kind of a set percentage that they see. Um, works on other properties that they manage. So we've been in contact with a few that are local to the Hendersonville market. We haven't quite had the conversation about how many E V charging stations they recommend having at a property, but. We would certainly provide enough to meet the demand of what they're seeing in the local market.
Okay, and and where, where are your offices in North Carolina?
So we have, one of our founders is actually down in Raleigh, North Carolina. Um, but we have projects kind of all over North Carolina and we take frequent trips to western North Carolina. Um, including Asheville and Hendersonville.
And do you know who's gonna manage the property?
Not at this moment, no. We've um, we've been in contact with a few firms, but have not quite. Um, made the decision of who will actually get the management for this property.
And um, other than the pool, um, are there any other recreational activities gonna be on the site?
So we have the pool as well as the clubhouse and those are kind of fronting on our um, kind of the main open space there. Um, I think we'll be providing benches and some walking trails that go around the property and then out to Garden Lane. Um, but as far as other amenities, um, not at this point, at least.
What, no pickleball?
No pickleball, unfortunately. We have to have some green space.
Okay, and um, the dumpsters, where are the dumpsters located?
Um, I believe it's right in what would be due north on this plan. Um, Warren, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's where the dumpster is located.
Right there, okay. Yep, I thought that's where it was, but I couldn't see from. I don't want to open this big. Okay. Jim, any other questions?
Um, quick follow up, if I may, to the E V situation.
Yes.
Today's market might require X charging stations in a decade will be four to five X.
Mm hmm.
We will be laying in the infrastructure to make additional stations uh easy to drop in. Or uh, will you lay in no infrastructure? So it will be a gargantuan project down the road.
Yeah, I I think the idea would be to, you know, install whatever amount. The property management company is comfortable with, and then I I do think it would be a good idea to. Lay down the infrastructure to at least allow some expansion on that because. I think like you were just saying, I I do think the future is more electric vehicles and. Um, we certainly wouldn't want to get ourselves in a position where we have to do this massive undertaking to just install. Um, a handful more chargers. So um, that's something that we'll certainly consider as we move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more question, you, you mentioned um promoting walking and and biking and the Acusta Trail. What, what provision? Made for for bicycle storage and also a place to work on your bicycles, things of that nature? Are you just gonna have folks carry them upstairs and?
No, no. So that that wasn't one of the slides and it's very possible that I had cut out by by then, but we, we will provide bike storage. Bike parking on this site. Um, we're doing it on on a lot of other projects that we're working on right now. So. We're um, you know, we're, we're definitely exploring the different solutions to bike parking and bike storage. Um, again, it's, it's, it's so early that I don't have exact figures as to how many bikes. Will have parking and storage for, but um. You know, a- as we get further along, we'll, we'll definitely ensure that it meets the demand for whatever we're seeing here.
Will, will that be indoor storage or outdoor stores? Because some folks spend as much on a bicycle as I spend on a car.
Right. You know, that's a, that's a good question. I think, you know, one solution would be that maybe there's a small portion of the clubhouse that's dedicated to. Kind of a bicycle repair shop. I know that that's pretty popular with projects these days. The bike storage, however, would likely be outside. Um, and and they do have solutions where it's, it's. It's sort of has its own little roof, so it's, it's kind of protected from the weather and the elements. Um, so it's not just one of those bike racks that you'd go and, you know, chain your bike up to. It's a, it's a little more. Complex and kind of like a mini shed for bikes, if you will.
But folks are gonna carry them up to the third floor. They're not gonna leave them laying around.
Are your apartments one, two, and three bedrooms?
That is correct.
Do you know the percentage?
Oh, off the top of my head, I believe it is about. What is it? I believe it's about fifty percent one bedroom, forty-ish percent two bedroom. And the remainder, so about ten percent three bedroom. But um, I can absolutely get the exact figures and uh follow up with you all if that would be helpful.
Any other questions? Okay. We will go ahead and open up public comment.
Jim, can I make one clarification on the information I provided? The uh.
Sorry, you'll be able to.
Yeah. The uh, I had stated that the tree board agreed to um, the modify or to the condition that the developer had proposed. Related to um, the installation of trees.
Smaller caliper.
Smaller cali- caliper. Uh. In fact, the, so the, the condition states, they'll, they'll install two inch caliber trees. Rather than the three inch caliber trees and that they would install one and a half inch caliber trees. Rather than and or. Which is the, the, the requirement is one and a half to two inch tree. So they're clarifying that they're gonna plant on the bottom end of that range and plant below. One inch below the requirement and the other.
On the three inch.
On the three inch.
And the tree board.
Tree board stated that they were okay with two to two and a half inch for both. I misunderstood that as they were okay with reducing the standard from three to two, but they're also then requiring that they plant. A two inch, a minimum two inch tree where they stated one and a half inch tree in the open space.
Okay.
So as a kind of a compromise.
Gotcha. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, just, just to um.
Can I add something to that? I, I think we need to look at the record on that a little bit. There was talk of three inch and there was talk of one and a half. We came back to. Oh man. We came back to the tree board the second time and we ran through this and. Their, their recommendation was a little confusing. They had two inch up in the top of their recommendation. I think they had two to two and a half. In the bottom of the recommendation. I was sitting right back here and I believe Matt came back and talked to me. As they were going through that and I think two and a half and one and a half is exactly what everybody was on the same plane with. This is the motion from the tree board.
Okay.
And I can.
We can clarify that later and I, we can clarify that later.
Ready to motion, I'll, I can bring that back up.
Okay, perfect. Um, just to gauge um how many folks want to speak today during the public comments, just raise your hand if you feel like you're gonna, gonna come on up and speak to us. Okay, so we're gonna limit um, limit you to three minutes. You can certainly um, and there'll be a timer up on the screen. Um, when you come, come to the podium, just give us your name and your address and then tell us what your concerns are. And you're speaking to the board here, not to the developer. Your chance to speak to them was at the neighborhood compatibility. This is a part of a process, um, and this will also be going to city council as you saw on April the twelfth. Come on up, sir.
Thank you. Um, and no random, a kind of a random order.
Give us your name and address first.
Uh, Carousel Lane, Richard Ottenman.
Thank you.
Um, the thing about the bikes is interesting because for fourteen years I've been going up and down Greenville Highway here and. There's either a few people practicing for the Tour de France or there's people who can't afford a car. That's the only bicycles you see. Anyway, um, with this project above town that they're building. And the one that apparently has been approved at Chadwick and this thing. It's gonna completely ruin this town. There's no capacity of any kind on Greenville Highway for any of this. And I'm not sure, in fact, in my life. Any, I never really lived in a town because I couldn't afford to live in a town. And what do you do? You buy a house outside of town. Where we have literally hundreds of thousands of acres in every direction. So I'm not sure. Why we're interested in increasing the population of the town. In fact, I think if you took a survey of everybody who lives in the city limits. You would find probably about ninety percent of them think we already have enough population. Um, the, the apartments that you allowed on Chadwick, that's about a two acre lot there at the corner of Garden. You have three two story buildings for six families. That would be appropriate for this lot as well. Um, he's showing all these spare places to walk around. If you're walking around in there, you're gonna be walking behind the cars. Or over the top of cars because there's only one point three. You can't allow them to build this without at least two spaces per the number of units. I mean, it doesn't make any sense to me. Um. The low income housing thing is interesting because they probably won't get filled in the first ninety days and. There's a need for low income housing, but not in this location. That, there's just, there's no access in or out of this building without trying to kill you in, in and out of this complex. The traffic will be lined up for miles. It already gets lined up for a great distance. Yeah, that's about it. Two story at the most and two family houses at the most. And uh, keep it so that you can still move around in town. Town's very busy all the time. The people are coming from somewhere, you just built a parking lot. Uh, I don't, I don't understand this whole idea of this at all. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, who's next? Come on up. Anybody?
We got some, we got some hands raised online as well.
Okay, we'll get to them.
Whenever you're ready.
Go ahead.
Come on up.
Um, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, my name is Cheryl Fortune. I live at sixty seven Charles Town Drive, not too far from the site. Um, I would like to request that the planning board deny the conditional zoning request for this property. The size and the density of the project is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan goal L U six for medium density, which states. Provide a transition between high and low density, low intensity neighborhood areas while providing a wide range of housing formats and price points. Promote walkable neighborhood design and compatible infill development in new neighborhoods. As a means of preserving and enhancing existing neighborhoods. This project at twenty four units per acre certainly does not provide a transition. From the adjoining single family um, one point seven per acre homes that are um, right behind it. In the end, it's gonna end up looking and feeling like a large apartment complex that you find in the middle of a metropolitan city that has been under redevelopment. The site plan um is inconsistent with development guidelines, at least where I read. In the comp plan L U seven for high intensity, which states at least sixty percent open space in new residential developments greater than three acres. So I may have read something wrong, but um, I felt like that was in, in a um inconsistent. Um, I'm not equipped to really give good input on the traffic impacts other than to state that um, it's already been. Described that the corridor needs improvement of Greenville Highway and the expected eight hundred and thirty six added trips per day. Will just, just, you know, be a huge impact on that corridor between down south end of Hendersonville and Flat Rock. And finally, I appreciate the uh discussion about affordable housing as the Board President for Housing Assistance Corporation, AKA HAC. Um, that, that is a definite need here. Um, and a substantial impact. It is not sixteen units, not. You know, uh, gonna be that big of a deal, although it's appreciated. We do need it anywhere we can get it. Um, so I, I would do that, but I would also, because this developer is involved with affordable housing. They know that with tax credit developments, you usually put um, a restriction on the rents for a much longer period than ten years. I would say at least, I would recommend at least fifteen years, possibly thirty. That's more consistent with um, low income housing tax credit programs. And it would keep those units affordable for a much longer period. And I really want to thank you for your time and your consideration of valid objections to this proposal.
Thank you. All right, sir, come on up. Give us your name and address and tell us what you're thinking.
I'm David Thomas. I live at ten ten Carousel Lane. Been watching this process. Uh, it is very interesting. There's a lot of things that are nebulous about it so far. Where we, where we get these assurances, but there, there's nothing written down. I think we need to solve our housing problem here. Uh, but I don't think it should be done at the expense of the existing residences. Um, where we have this uh, this difference in um, uh, density, uh, one point seven as opposed to uh. Twenty four per acre. It's, it's just way out of proportion in that they're taking down. Huge amount of trees to get all this worked in. And and one of the things that wasn't brought up, I, I. Uh, this young leader here brought it up, it was the um, the traffic, adding the eight hundred and something trips uh to the area. Greenville Highway is already overtaxed in, in, in that. Everybody knows that. We also know that this is a. This is a uh, a state road, so the city doesn't have any capacity to improve that situation. So now we're adding. More density into a, into a traffic thing that that really has reached its capacity.
reached its capacity. The, uh, what, what, what was interesting about this path that goes down to a nebulous area, whether, oh, do we, does the city take care of that or not? And we have all of these issues that are just going to create more complexity to it. So basically, in, uh, in summary, this is the wrong project and it's, it's the, in the wrong place. And, uh, I hope you consider that in your, uh, consideration.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Who else wants to come up and talk? Come on up, ma'am. Oh, there you go. Hey there, what's your name?
My name is, uh, George Phillips. I live at 1140 Carousel Lane. My wife and I have lived there for six years and we are probably no more than 50 to 60 yards away from the property line of this proposed development. There's one house between us and these seven acres. Um, I think there are two main impacts that must be considered. Number one is the traffic situation on Greenville Highway would become worse. It, it would go from bad to horrible. It's two lanes. There's no left turn lane at Chadwick and Greenville Highway. And I think there's going to be a very similar problem at the two entrances in and out of this proposed apartment complex. And it will make it dangerous because it will slow down, um, police, police cars, ambulances, fire trucks. You know, it, it just makes a bad situation worse on Greenville Highway. Um, the second main impact is the stormwater runoff. And we already experienced flooding along Mud Creek. Many of you have driven, you know, and seen the water that backs up near the intersection of Spartanburg Highway and Greenville Highway. And this little creek at the north end that runs. It, it goes down and runs under Brookdale Lane and then behind that little shopping center on Greenville and then under Greenville Highway and eventually in the Mud Creek. And Mud Creek has flooding at several places along there. Because of these two main concerns, I am requesting a continuance of this process. And there are too many questions that are still unanswered. A, a second traffic impact assessment, TIA, needs to be done by an independent company. Also, we need further stormwater analysis done by an experienced hydrologist. There are two retention ponds proposed and retention ponds work well until they fill up and overflow. And that water's gotta go somewhere. It's going to come down Mud Creek. And we're going to see more times when we have flooding at the corner of Spartanburg Highway and Greenville Highway. And it's going to last longer. Can I have a quick show of hands of any Brookdale residents who are in favor of a continuance? Raise your hand. All right, now denial. All right.
Sir, you could wrap up. Thank you, thank you again.
Okay.
No, no, go ahead, wrap it up. You said you had the final, you said, you said the word final, sir.
I have one final thought here and that is that we need to stop developers turning Hendersonville into another Asheville.
Thank you. Okay, and I, I love the, the show of affection, but if we could just keep it real professional, folks. Um, go ahead, ma'am, tell us your name and address and.
My husband is Robert. I'm Susan Stubbs and we live, excuse me, 1141 Carousel Lane. And by our house is Garden Lane, curves into Carousel Lane. And the dumpster is going to be across the street from our house. That's a lot of people to be throwing everything into a dumpster. It'll have to be emptied more often. And I don't know why if they have all those apartments, why don't they put it in the middle? Why do they have to put it way back there in the corner? We moved up here in 2005 and we, it's a nice, we love Hendersonville. Nice, quiet neighborhood. This is going to ruin all that. It won't be considered a, um, retirement place to come to. And everybody talks about, oh, it's wonderful for retired people and everything, but now we go in and out Brookdale Avenue. It's terrible trying to get in or out onto Greenville Highway. Now, what's it going to be when other people come? Oh, I'm just not for this at all. And I sent all of you letters. I guess you forgot them yet, but I agreed on it. I put in there, is this going to be another Asheville? You want Greenville to, Hendersonville to stay like it is. Not a big, if we wanted to go to a big city, we would have stayed at it in Miami, Florida. We came up here for the retirement and like I said, we love it here and I just hope that something can be done about the moving this. Move it to outside the city limits is one idea. Or make it smaller, make homes there to fit in with the rest of the neighborhood. Anything to get rid of this many people this fast, one, one place. And I'm not used to speaking, I'm very nervous. Thank you very much.
Quite all right. Thank you. Thank you for coming up. Come on up, sir.
Hello. My name is Tom Borgo. I live at 1132 Carousel Lane, just a few feet from this. Uh, almost everything that I wanted to say has already been said and, uh, you know, probably a hundred times wouldn't be enough, but there are a couple of more things that worry me. Uh, 1.3 parking places per unit. I mean, does that grab you as something that a developer would, would even think about? Uh, for 40 years I lived in a condominium complex in Atlanta that had two parking places per unit and it wasn't enough. And everybody that lived there had two cars and we had parties and we had guests. Now where are they gonna park? Let me tell you where they're gonna park. That little driveway, little walkway that goes out on the Garden Lane means that people can park on, uh, Brookhaven and Garden Lane and Carousel Lane to take the, their extra cars. Uh, and when they have visitors, they say, oh, we'll just park on Brookhaven and then come in on this, this walkway. Uh, you can see the problem that that's going to cause. 1.3 parking places for any kind of a multifamily facility is ridiculous. The other thing, in the first time that I talked to, at the first meeting, was that, uh, my wife and I have observed two cities that have been completely ruined by overbuilding. And, uh, one of them is Asheville, that's been mentioned, and the other one is St. Simon's Island, uh, which both of those places used to be so charming, uh, years and years ago. And now you don't even want to go to them anymore unless you have to go to the doctor or something in our case. Uh, this is a great town and, you know, it seems to me that the city ought to be wanting to preserve that. Oh, hang on, can I borrow that, that document? This was printed off the internet and it's got a vision statement that I just wanted to read a sentence to you. Uh, I've got 38 seconds. The last of this sentence says, "With planned infrastructure improvements as means to create jobs and preserve and enhance Hendersonville's small-time character." Let me tell you, there is nothing about this that is going to preserve any small-town character. It's going to destroy small-town character. And all of these wonderful people who live in this Brookdale community right behind here, uh, are going to be very negatively impact, impacted. And you think that once it's built, that we'll all forget about it, but we won't. And our, our life is going to be negatively impacted and it won't be able to get it back. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Hey there, come on up.
Hey there. I'm Charles Webb, 113 Appledore Avenue. Uh, I've lived in this area since 1993. Um, I appreciate the fact that y'all volunteer for this board and it's great that you allow the public comments. I'm not going to repeat a whole lot of what have other people said, but I had the same sentiment. Um, I used to live in Brookdale and the creek, the ditch that runs behind there has changed drastically since 1993. Uh, Garden Lane, when they built those houses back there, um, it washed out the culvert on Appledore Avenue. I don't know if you remember that, but just south of Ace Hardware, we were without a road for almost two years. Um, the next culvert up, which is behind Ace Hardware and it goes back to the Maybach Mansion, that's washed out twice in the past 10 years. Uh, I've had multiple complaints to the city and the, you know, the runoff and things like that. We were told that when they built Publix, it was going to probably, you know, solve some of the, the flooding problems. And of course, that's Mud Creek mostly. It didn't, it didn't happen. I'm, I'm sure those engineers really thought that they, they got it, you know, thought out and everything, but it's just getting worse and worse and worse. And, and, and you can't blame climate change and the amount of rain and things like that. The, these, these are, it's, it's human made. It's the human part that's causing these, these flooding and the more runoff going into the creek, there's more driveways that are paved. We, we really need that buffer to absorb some of the water that's coming down through there. That creek never dries up. It's spring fed and, uh, it, it, like I said, it's getting a lot worse. Um, that and the traffic. Uh, I timed it the other day. I live on Appledore, wanted to take a left. It took me six minutes to get out and make a left. Now I could have taken a right, but, uh, but yeah, there was probably a wreck someplace else, but the whole traffic area there, if that apartment complex goes up on Chadwick, it's going to make it worse, but there's a traffic light there. It's, it's not quite so bad there. And you know what? There's a huge lot across from where the food line used to be. This would be a perfect neighborhood for that lot right there. Uh, I think what they've done with the design and everything is absolutely wonderful, but it doesn't fit into the neighborhood. If it was a little closer to town, I think it would be great. I'm a hundred percent for it. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Come on up.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. Uh, my name is Richard Vickers. I live at 220 U-Bank Drive, Hendersonville, North Carolina, and the allergies are really in my head, so you'll have to forgive me. Um, I met with, uh, Mr. Phillips, uh, regarding the stormwater issue. Uh, I was involved, uh, in a prior situation, uh, regarding a development and stormwater implications, which would have affected Duodale's neighborhood. Um, I met with the, uh, stormwater chief four times. I consulted with an expert hydrologist and engineer, uh, regarding the mitigation efforts that the developer was going to undertake. In essence, uh, the mitigation efforts, in the expert's opinion, would not solve the problems with flooding. Uh, one, uh, on Donview at the bottom of the road, one of the homes was literally going to be swept away, uh, given the amount of storm flow from the apartment complex that was going to be built. Um, I haven't heard any quantification as to how the amount of water, uh, coming from a deforested property with that many buildings, a parking lot, a pool and a clubhouse, um, is going to be mitigated. Finally, uh, and in the absence of some empirical evidence, it seems to me that, um, just accepting the representation that, well, we'll do this to mitigate is not acceptable. Finally, in meeting with the stormwater, uh, chief, he made it clear that the stormwater unit does not have the resources or the funding to remediate the problems that result from stormwater flooding once something like this is built. He was a very candid, honest man and that's the point. I also don't think that the builder is going to come back and remediate any problems. So these residents are going to be stuck with flooding. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Asthan Khan and similar to, uh, um, uh, my voice is gone, so bear with me.
Where do, where do you live?
Uh, I live on 1142 Carousel Lane, which, uh, funnily enough is very, 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 very close to the proposed pathway. And that is one of my concerns because with that pathway, it's going to, um, create, um, some people earlier mentioned a lot more problems. There's going to be parked cars all up and down that road. For the past, uh, up until quite recently, actually, um, ever since my parents and I have been living there for the past, uh, since 2017, um, that part of Carousel Lane that is private, um, we've been taking care of that. We've been removing snow, we've been, we've been removing fallen branches on our own. And we don't want our, because of that pathway, we don't want our privacy to be affected in any way, shape or form. With that being said, um, I humbly implore the, um, planning board to deny this and sort of, I don't know, I don't know exactly the correct way that you would go about it, but designate that forest, those woods and protect it from any other sort of possible future, um, development. Because for at least, uh, for at least slightly over 100 years, um, that forest has been untouched by man. The only man-made building in that forest is just, um, that house that has been vacant for quite a while. But that forest brings uniqueness and a rather high quality of life into our neighborhood that not many other neighborhoods kind of have. We have, uh, multiple unique species of birds in that forest that will essentially lose its, lose its own home and sort of just enter our properties and, or just, you know, fly away. But I want to have essentially that pathway completely removed and hopefully this entire plan removed as well with that forest being designated and protected. Uh, oh, it's almost out of time. All right, thank you.
Can I ask you just one question real quick? Since you said you do a little maintenance on that, that, that road there. When I, when I walked through there yesterday, it looked like part of the road right by the creek had caved in a little bit and somebody had put like a Home Depot orange bucket there to keep it.
Yeah, there was.
Almost like a safety cone. How, how long is that? Is that, is that recent or is that?
No, that's been there for quite a while.
Been there for quite a while.
Years.
Eight years?
Yep.
Where it kind of caved in a little bit? Okay, thank you. I just wanted to know.
That part we haven't been able to.
I was just trying to figure out if that was something that was recent or if it was old or.
Yeah, no, it's been quite a while.
Thank you. Come on up.
Thank you. Um, I'm Gail Fortner. I live on Greenville Highway, a couple of blocks south of 1202. Um, thank you for listening. I've spoken before, so I'm going to try to say some different things if possible. The three points are density, traffic and the stormwater, um, along with the, the forest. But I have to acknowledge that property owners have a right to sell their property and just the right kind of development that's suitable for that in, in the neighborhood and, and compliant with the current zoning. Um, you just look at the number of homes in the subdivision and on however many acres that is and compare that to 165 on six acres. There's, it's just completely incompatible. Um, the noise will exist with this density. Infill. The definition of infill is fill or block up. This will definitely fill up some property and it will block traffic. Before any decision is, is made, um, sorry, I lost my place. Please carefully consider the existing homes and the, and the area. And there are, there are none like this. There are, there are no buildings like this. Um, regrets after the fact are not acceptable. Integrity is needed with this decision. If this were to be approved and all is set and the developer leaves town, the added traffic speeding accidents with additional emergency vehicles, not to mention possibly blocking that with more traffic that could mean someone's life. Good neighbors with property flooding, their property could depreciate. It's too late for regrets then. If you continue with this by 2030 on the plan, Greenville Highway could be a tragedy. Apartment residents, I lived in an apartment at one time when I was young, can leave and go elsewhere if they become dissatisfied. I'm at my home for life. I've loved Hendersonville my life. This particular home is my family's about 25 years. The comp, as one gentleman mentioned, the comp plan speaks of enhancing existing neighborhoods. I haven't heard anything that, that enhances or anyone state that is enhanced, that it would be enhanced by this development. We are a unique community. Please let us remain that way. I respectfully request denial of this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Hi.
I'm Nicole Ausler. I live at 203 Katamarra Overlook Drive. I appreciate the time here today. I'm learning a lot about this process. I'm going to show my hand early and let you know that I am definitely against this. And I hope by the end of all the public comment and the careful consideration and all the rules and regulations that you will get to what I believe is the only sensible thing, and that's to deny this request. It's possibly a lovely development. This is not the place for it. I live and come down Rutledge Drive to Greenville Highway. That is a hairpin turn if you're making a right. I taught two team drivers at that corner. Trust me, it will gray your hair. Okay? So you have to make a hairpin turn if you want to go right. And if you go on left, you got to pull out far enough and then you got to, you know, you got to wait. You got, you got to time it to jump across and into either lane to go left. Okay? And I can tell you how many times I've been at that stop sign, certain time of day, and watched a school bus do the same thing I just had to do to get onto Rutledge. It's not the place for however many more cars they claim they're going to have there. How they get to the number they get, they say, well, we're only going to provide so many parking spaces. So that's how many cars are going to be there? I don't know. They just said there were 50% of them are one bedroom. That leaves what 80 something units that are going to be two and three bedroom? So if I live there with my husband, we share a car automatically because there's only one space? No, two adults are going to have two cars. Two adults that have teenagers, I have three cars. Okay? The math doesn't work. I'm kind of perplexed at this process in general. The burden should not be on the homeowners. I don't understand how everything gets to this point and it feels like a foregone conclusion. Then we're saying, well, could you please do something? No. What's approved and what's allowed is the Greenville Highway mixed use. That was something that was designed and decided by planners way before these out of tanners came in and decided that they wanted to claim affordable housing in order to enrich themselves. Their affordable housing, to me, that's a joke. 10% 16 units that they only have to keep for 90 days for 10 years, I think the lady was pointing out. If it's zoned for 50 units right now, Greenville Highway mixed use, make them all affordable housing. Have 50 affordable housing units that makes a reasonable amount of traffic. And oh my gosh, your green space would actually be green space. Okay? Not, I don't know, the, the edge of the grass behind the building. They reference, you know, this creating a natural buffer for the neighborhood? Tell me how 11 42 foot high buildings is a natural buffer for the one, two, three sides of this lot that have residences that are already preexisting from the 50s and, and prior? I know I'm out of time. The stormwater is a real thing. That's another thing that I feel like that neighborhood is going to be destroyed because of people who are coming out of there. When the, that intersection at Publix is backed up because of the stormwater, where am I going to go? Well, we all try to go around, right? We all get good places. They're going to go right through that neighborhood. Okay? So I think that's most of my things. Thank you for letting me rant and rave just a little bit. To me, when you said it upward road, the thing that we saw earlier, that makes sense. They're right by I-26. They're near the Spartanburg, you know, corridor. They're still within, you know, reasonable amount of traffic. I just don't know where these imaginary bike riding people that don't drive cars are coming from. That's my point. Thanks for letting me make it.
Thank you. Thank you. We like the passion. Okay, come on up, ma'am. Give us your name and address.
My name is Sharon Pearson. I'm at 220 U Bank Drive.
Thank you.
Hendersonville. I am here as a frequent user of the Greenville Highway in this area and also as a friend of the neighborhood. I would like to point out that the young man that just spoke neglected to tell you that the water has ruined their driveway. Yeah, I've met with, with some of the neighbors from the neighborhood and have walked the property and driven the, driven the neighborhood. And they paid to have their driveway done and the water has sunked about midway clear up there. Anyways, that's not my, not my main point. Practically, I would agree with everything that people have set up to this point, but I really wanted to emphasize the safety part. I think that there is certainly going to be escape. There's going to be an escape highway that ends up going up through these neighborhoods because people are going to get impatient waiting for traffic to clear on Greenville Highway. They're going to come up Brookdale and they will drive all up in there to be able to get, depending on which direction they're, they're going, but they're going to be able to get through there. It's going to create a lot of traffic throughout the neighborhoods. It's a safety issue. There are not sidewalks there, there are children playing. So the safety thing, the other part of the safety is trying to turn left. And a lot of people have mentioned that, but I practiced, I tried to turn left onto Greenville Highway from Brookdale particularly, but several other streets along there too, both sides of the street. And it's almost impossible even at, at a good time of day. And, you know, people, people get to the, it's their turn and if they think they got a break, then they gun it. And I think there's going to be accidents. I don't think that that's out of the realm of possibility. The, oh, I, I'm back to the parking thing. With 214 parking spaces, that, that's just not a realistic number. And other people have said that. I just really agree with them about that. And I wondered in, with the original TIA that was done, if tho, if those figures somehow colored their, their evaluation of what they were asked to look at. If they were working from a different number than would be realistic and accurate. I came here with the idea that I thought a, an extension of time to, to be able to address some of these things was, was going to be a good idea. Since I've been sitting here, I think it's a denial that I'm asking for. One other thing is the, I talked with a gentleman at DOT who told me that anything like a left-hand turn lane, that the developer would be responsible for that. And I'm, I don't know if Greenville Highway had to be widened in order to incorporate that, if the developer would be responsible for that as well. But I ask you to deny this.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and let's check the Zoom call. Anybody that wants to speak, go ahead and raise your, we'll get back to you. Yeah, we'll get back to you. I'm just going to take a few folks on the Zoom call and we'll get, we'll get back to you. Yeah, I promise.
Dave Hewitt. Hi. Dave Hewitt, I live at 291 Town Place Drive. And just to put a bow on this, from whatever everybody else has said, I think it's a good project, a nice project, but it's in the wrong place. Let me ask a rhetorical question. Would the planning committee consider putting a public grocery store at this site? If you consider the number of parking places at the Publix, 246, with the planned number of parking places here, 214, you can see that it's not much different. So I ask again, would you put a Publix in this location? My head is on a swivel at times trying to get out onto Greenville Highway. I cringe at what it would be like when several hundred additional cars add to the traffic volume, especially in the morning and the evening rush. I'm not opposed to an apartment complex such as this. I think it's a good plan from what I've seen. I know we need more affordable housing for workers at our restaurants and other businesses. Just put it where the, the infrastructure is there to support it, like a four lane highway. Instead of overloaded Greenville Highway. Spartanburg Highway east of Greenville comes to mind. Asheville Highway heading out of town comes to mind. Upward Road comes to mind. There's probably a lot of places that have the infrastructure. And then lastly, Greenville Highway is crumbling. In front of my place, it's just a mass of patches from where the sewer, I guess, is leaking and it's collapsing the road. All the potholes, you've seen them, they're bark and pink. So that's kind of, that's my summary. And so I'll keep it short and leave my time for somebody else. Bye.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else on the Zoom call?
Yes. Mr. Fitch. We've asked you to unmute.
Ken Fitch, 1046 Patton Street. The neighborhood compatibility meeting for this project and this meeting have brought forth a wide range of amazingly specific detailed comments, presenting an overwhelming apparent reality that compatibility is absent here. Indeed, the project provokes a triple whammy here with the severe impacts first on the surrounding established neighborhood with its flooding, unsustainable traffic and the loss of its defining natural features and a unique residential character. And then second, the character altering impact on the historic mixed use Greenville Highway corridor, a narrow two lane road unsustainable for any abrupt increase in traffic interactions. And third, the historic wooded site itself with its canopy tree forests, streams, wetlands and wildlife, a unique ecosystem environment that even zoos and aviaries would seek to replicate. And indeed therein on site is where the disjunctive disconnect of the project with its 11 buildings, parking lots, swimming pool and clubhouse is rather astounding, especially given two recent presentations by city staff. In addressing the flooding situation in the regional drainage area of which this site is a part, it is apparent that the FEMA maps are out of date dating from 2007 and do not correspond to increased flood conditions here. And the true risk of flooding is greater than any flood maps indicate. And this directly corresponds to the situations experienced by the neighborhood flood surviving residents that have testified previously. To place this development on top of wetlands and streams with a removal of canopy trees and wetland storage adjacent to an unstable water course would intensify the existing situation and render the proposed stormwater measures an anachronism. The features introduced to accommodate the proposed development would increase the severity of impacts elsewhere with greater quantity and velocity in stormwater flow. However, in a forested ecosystem, all the roots and vegetation will slow the water going through the soil. A single canopy tree can absorb up to 100 gallons of water a day. A high percentage of water that falls on a forested tract will soak up, will soak all the, 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 the water into the ground and not leave the site. However, with development, much of this will become runoff. And it was acknowledged in the developer's presentation.
You can't see the, but you, you, can you wrap it up for us?
Yeah, I'm, I'm almost there. The, the, the developer's presentation acknowledged that the overflow from the stormwater system would flow into the adjacent stream. Finally, the proposed reasons for denial as stated in the packet are clearly valid and undeniable. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else on the Zoom call?
Yes, we have one more. Ms. Williams, you've been unmuted.
Lynn Williams, Chadwick Avenue. I want to start by saying thank you for your time. So the Spartanburg Highway and Greenville Highway are completely different roads. It's mostly pavement on the Spartanburg Highway side with little shade or tree canopy. The Greenville Highway side reflects the history and character of historic Flat Rock with its forested magic extending from the National Historic Park site of the Bill of Carl Sandberg home. The proposal has a beautiful vision in many ways, but this density is not appropriate. It's the density that places the burden of externalized costs on its surrounding residents. The mix of zoning is not presented in the site plan according to the high density and medium intensity neighborhood designation in the comp plan land use vision with less substantially density, with less substantial density towards the back of the property protecting the stream. Our neighborhoods here are peaceful and safe with minimal traffic cut through that allows for children, pets, families to play in the streets and walk every day. I see kids running home from their bus stops on Greenville Highway through the neighborhood to get home safely. The traffic study does not take into consideration the effects on the residential communities of Brooklyn, Brookdale and Apple Door. Like I said, kids play in the street. The developer said previously in the neighborhood compatibility meeting, they would apply traffic calming measures to adjacent communities to deter speeders and traffic. We have traffic calming measures on Chadwick. And while in some ways it helps, every day, multiple times a day, we have people zooming down the road and animals are hit all the time. Sadly, there's one dead on the road right now. If you have to mitigate traffic in adjacent neighborhoods, then one is clearly creating a negative impact and public safety hazard for all residents. The site plan presented at the neighborhood compatibility meeting to the residents was much smaller footprint with much more preserved trees. After the developer claimed to take our feedback into consideration, they increased the footprint and habitat destruction, including the impacts with the waters running through the neighborhood. Brooklyn and Brookdale denote the waters running through. Brooks going down to the flood plain near Chadwick even. There's foxes, raccoons, vast amount of birds. And this is a very important aspect of our green infrastructure development noted by Mr. Manley. This area is a huge sponge for stormwater mitigation from loss of trees and impervious, impervial surfaces. This will greatly change the character. Property is next to Brooklyn Manor, a suburban development. The house on the property is actually historic. And at the gate, there is stone bricks, very similar to the historic designation of the Brooklyn Manor Gate just nearby on Greenville Highway. My concern about demolition of the home and the history of the space. You said 302 trees will be killed out of 507. This is terrible. And I'm very concerned about the tree board suggesting a 40 foot wetlands buffer. And right now, the developers agreeing to 20. Also, the dumpster by the stream will lend to increased pollution. When we look back.
Lynn, if you could wrap it up. Thanks. Go ahead, go ahead. You can finish your thought.
When we look back at the Chadwick Avenue and Greenville Highway decision, I swear I remember that this body actually denied the application. And so I wanted to look back and say, we thought it was too dense at 80. This is 135. My family's been in the neighborhood for over 70 years and this used to be all forested. This is one of the last remaining pieces of habitat left. We ask you to please protect it. I believe that's everything I have to say, except one last thing was if you look at, they said they have a project in Arden. And if you go further down 25 near Mills Gap Road anytime in the afternoon, you can't drive at all. There's a project just like this there and the traffic is terrible. I never go there. And that's what's going to happen to this road if we allow this project to go through. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we had someone in the room over here. Come on up, sir. Give us your name, address and tell us what you're.
My name is Manuel Garcia. I live in Flat Rock, Pinnacle Peak Lane, 319. Okay? And I oppose this project. Okay? I oppose this project because it will destroy Flat Rock and noise pollution will be very much enhanced. All these attractions that are already overwhelmed, doing its functions already by the traffic. It's a big problem. Many accidents occur there. And, and I, I really think that America has been made by small towns. Um, and, and I, I really think that America has been made by small towns like ours. Everybody here has come from other places to, to look for something different than, than what things can, can change now. So we've come from far apart. I'm Cuban, okay? I live in Puerto Rico. I had to move from Cuba to Puerto Rico and now I live here so happy, okay? And I think that we shouldn't change uh, uh, our way of, uh, it's going to change our way we live, our way of life. It's going to have crime in this area. We haven't talked about that. The hospital probably will be overwhelmed because this is not going to be, uh, it's going to be a starting point. Okay, from here on, we'll, we'll do more projects like this one. Okay, and, and it's really uh, something, excuse me. Uh, yeah, and it, for, for me, I, I look at it as a, as a failed social experiment. You know, we're moving into those, those type of uh, uh, positions nowadays and, and it has all the bad things about a social experiment. Uh, and I, I feel that we should not uh, allow this. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the room? Come on up, sir.
Uh, my name's Noah George. I live on Carousel Lane. Uh, first off, thank you. Thank all of you for serving on this board and uh, serving, giving your time to serve the community. Um, I do believe in capitalism and I believe capitalism can solve a lot of our social problems. And one of our biggest problems in Henderson County is affordable housing. I mean, as you know, the affordable, the average sales price in Henderson County is quickly approaching five hundred thousand over the last twelve months, but this is a for-profit endeavor with a carrot of affordable housing. And by right, the property can have, as I learned tonight, can have up to fifty units, which is seven point one units per acre, if I'm doing my math correctly, which is more consistent with the one point seven, which is currently there in the neighborhood. And they won't have to promise any affordable housing if they just develop it by right or stay within the current density. Uh, and I had to ask myself if this was a case of NIMBY, right? Not my backyard. I mean, you're probably familiar with Walter Cronkite when he lobbied against, you know, wind farms in his backyard in Martha's Vineyard. I, I don't think that's the case. It'd be a much harder decision for you guys to make as a planning board if, um, or even it'd be a harder argument for the neighbors even, you know, claim, you know, I don't want this in my backyard. If this developer was offering over fifty percent affordable housing, or if the developer was offering long-term affordable housing, that's not the case. I mean, as you, you heard, it's a ninety day period and then they don't have to do it, which I understand is because of the lenders, but you know, if your planning board is gonna rezone and justify higher density, it should be for affordable housing and not just the ten percent, which may not even happen. Uh, you know, I appreciate the attorney's attempt to frame this as a positive, you know, to be a buffer for the neighborhood. I don't think that's uh, accurate. And I also appreciate Lock Seven's development success and I wish them the best and hope they develop a thousand more units here in Henderson County. But in the zoning that allows it, I mean, that's why we have zoning, because it is allowed in certain areas. And so we do need more units that actually come to fruition to relieve the housing shortage that we have. And again, capitalism can solve that problem, but you know, the planning board is faced with this ultimate decision of rezoning is, in my opinion, it's about density. And the project is not in line with the density growth is inevitable and it's your responsibility to continue to manage the growth. So thank you so much for, let me make those comments.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the room or on the Zoom call? Come on up, man.
I'm Jody Bell. My husband Don and I live on Carousel Lane, uh, two houses from where this project is going to be built. Um, we both would like you to deny the project. I'm not a good speaker. Is there a consideration of the devaluation of the homeowners' properties in the neighborhood because it's going to devalue our property? Um, I recently got a tax statement and I saw that my tax bill went up based on um, estimated value of my home. I'm like, well, they need to wait until this property decide on before they decide on what my tax value is because it's going to go down if this project goes up. Because there's going to be noise from tenants and traffic. There's going to be increased light from the structures. There's going to be an increase of people entering the neighborhood for parking because they won't have enough parking for the units. So they're going to park in our neighborhood and cut through. Um, walking, which I'm not opposed to people walking in our neighborhood. We have, but the people who walk in our neighborhood, for the most part, I know they're my neighbors. They own their houses. They care about our neighborhood because they own property there. Tenants don't care about the property they live in because they're tenants, a lot of them. I, my, when I grew up, my parents owned an apartment complex. Believe me, I know how tenants can be. My sister and I had to clean up when they were evicted. The congested traffic and everything everybody else talked about is all true. Increased risk of tr, of crime. Because there's going to be so many more people and especially if they're walking through our neighborhood randomly, coming through the, an opening in the woods and who are those people? Normally I see somebody walking down my street. It's like, oh, hey, you know, I know my neighbor. I know. I might not even know their name, but I know they live down that street and I see them all the time. They're property owners. They care about the neighborhood because they own property there. There's going to be a just decreased risk in privacy. Um, a decrease in safety on your own property um, because of the traffic, walking and driving with children playing outside in the street like they're normally able to, able to do in our neighborhood because we have low traffic. Um, there's going to be a less desire to purchase homes in our neighborhood because of all this happening. Traffic, increase in crime, the lights, the construction, all that is going to decrease people wanting to purchase in our neighborhood when we want to sell. Um, how will we be compensated for that decrease in the value of our home? I know if I get in a car accident because somebody hits me, I can sue them for the decreased value of my car because they ran into my car. What's going to happen here? My property is going to be devalued. And also, um, is this going to set a precedent? Allowing this property to be built. Once one is done, there's going to be more. Well, hey, you did it on Greenville Highway. Why can't we do it over here? What kind of, I mean, this is going to look like, um, Asheville Highway? Like somebody said up in Arden, there's one after another, after another apartment complex. This is, the traffic is crazy. We don't want that. We respectfully ask you to deny.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room or on the Zoom call? We good on the Zoom call? No hands, no hands raised? You want to speak? Come on up. Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Linda Bischoff. I live on four eighteen Crooked Creek Road, which not really a neighboring community, uh, but what I, I oppose the, the project um, for all the reasons I echo what everybody has said before me, that I'm afraid of this becoming a precedent in, in the community in Hendersonville. The other big thing I'm concerned about are the woods. So if this goes through, I'm hoping that maybe you can have a moratorium and knock down, not knock down any of the woods during nesting season. And that's my concern. So thank you for your time. I'm good with that.
Thank you. Thanks for coming up. Okay, anyone else? Come on up, ma'am.
My name is Nancy Bullock. I live on Carousel. As I'm sure you're aware, Hendersonville was awarded a Tree City designation by the National Arbor Day Society. So I just kind of find it ironic that we're looking to all those hundreds and hundreds of trees. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go ahead and clo, go ahead. Come on up, sir. Come on. You're on the edge of your seat, weren't you?
I'm Donald Bell. I live at Carousel Lane. My wife was just up here. I'm of the NIMBY mindset. It took us five years to find that neighborhood to buy a house. We looked all over Hendersonville. We finally found the house that we wanted to retire in. I'm about to hit sixty-five. Don't want to look out my bedroom window and see a forty-five foot tall building. I mean, it's within four hundred feet of my property. I see all the trees. You say you went through the neighborhood. Have you been down Greenville Highway?
Living in Greenville Highway.
All right, so you've seen all those big potholes with the pink circles around them.
Paint the pink circles.
How many bikes are going to be into those potholes? So they won't be riding on Greenville Highway. They'll be riding around my neighborhood. I got three dogs. They let me know when anybody gets near my house. So if you increase hundreds of people walking around my house, I'll have no peace. I'm getting ready to retire and be at home every day. So not in my backyard. I mean, it's the wrong place for that development. Down there by the executive and what is that Chadwick Commons, there's an empty lot with no trees. Perfect place. Don't want all the traffic, but that's the best place to put that development. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have someone on Zoom with.
Okay, sure. Let's unmute them.
Oh, Rose, you've been unmuted.
And they, uh, they can't see the timer, so I'll remind you when your time's up.
Okay, I, I'm Noah Rose and I live on Balsam Road. And I just want to thank everybody that has spoken so far so eloquently. And I don't know that I could say it any better. And I am thoroughly opposed to this project. And I think the planning committee needs to look into their heart and soul before they vote on this and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any more last minute? Okay, we're going to go ahead and close public comments and have a discussion. And we're going to pick on Yolanda first. That's always, you know. You didn't bring cookies.
I did not bring cookies. Um, however, I do bring experience working in high density areas in New York and the impact on removal of environmental factors and how that impacts overall mood, uh, mental health, physical health. So I'm actually quite concerned about some of those. And also because I'm a licensed clinical social worker, the affordable housing, that's a bone.
Okay. Neil, you think we can come up with some conditions and make everybody happy or?
No. Um, I love this site plan. Uh, I love the way it melds one, two, and three bedroom apartments and uh, kind of minimizes and a footprint to a major extent. But as several people pointed out, it's in the wrong place. It will destroy that neighborhood and uh, Nancy and I walked that neighborhood right after we walked Highview, as a matter of fact. Folks, those of you who live there, your neighborhood is beautiful. I wish I had found it when we decided to move here. It is gorgeous, but I think this will destroy it. Again, the right project, put it in the better place. This isn't it.
Andrew?
I grew up in this town and I've always loved Balsam Road and that neighborhood. It's just cozy and um, I love the big lots and I was always cutting through Balsam Road, which I know I should not, but um, I just feel like if you put this here, you're going to have more, so much more traffic, so much more cut through. It's just too dense. I don't like the tall buildings. It doesn't fit the community. I mean, you talk about a neighborhood compatibility. I mean, where's the compatibility? Like, I'm just looking at everybody here and it's, I don't see it.
Yeah, I, I, and I feel similar, uh, uh, because I was reading back through the neighborhood compatibility comments and I'm not sure that that was ever really resolved. I mean, I'm not sure that the compatibility issue. I mean, I, I know that you guys said you've reduced the number of units, but you know, there were some real serious things that were mentioned in, in that meeting and I, I think they're just not addressed.
Anyone else? Barbara, Barbara, Peter?
The affordable housing to me is, I just totally disregarded that completely. Um, I'm going to say that it's incompatible with the area. There's too many units for a small space. Uh, if you choose to have housing, then keep it at fifty unit. Um, that may be more of a possibility, but I do agree with the consensus of what everyone has said, why this is a great project in the wrong place.
Peter?
Uh, I'll reiterate everybody's comments. It's a delightful looking project. It'll be a wonderful project somewhere else. It's uh, it's not totally appropriate for the Greenville location and I've lived there for twenty-five plus years, so drive by it all the time.
So it's sounding to me like even with conditions that this is incompatible. Mm-hmm. We're talking about, um, there's, there's the ephemeral stream that, um, the plan shows being put into a pipe um, feeding into somebody's yard where there's a wetland delineation and they just spent six thousand dollars to try to prevent flooding in their yard. And then we're going to take an ephemeral stream and put it in a pipe and feed it right into their yard. I don't see that working. I think, I think a fifty year stormwater system would be more appropriate. Um, but, but the, the incompatibility with, with single level brick ranch houses all around it. And if you read the Greenville Highway Mixed Use Zoning District Classification, in the first paragraph, it says development, development design becomes a critical consideration when uses which previously had been deemed incompatible are authorized and single family is one of those uses. It also says though, that there should be no limit on the number of residential dwellings on any development tract. So if you could make it compatible, you're not going to be limited to the number of units, but making it compatible is certainly going to limit those number of units. I, I just don't know if there's enough conditions that can be placed on it to make it compatible.
I don't think we can, Jim. I really don't.
Um, does somebody have a motion?
Oh, denial.
Yeah.
Go for it, Peter.
Uh, for recommending denial. Uh, I'm with the planning board, recommend city council, deny and ordinance, amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville. Changing the zoning, changing the zoning designation of the subject in uh, since, in nine five seven eight dash zero one, and S three four four zero. GHMU Greenville Highway Mixed Use to Greenville Highway, CZD Greenville Highway Mixed Use Dash Conditioning Zone, based on the following, one. The petition is found to be, to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville twenty thirty comprehensive plan based on the information from the staff analysis because this, what are you writing?
Should be inconsistent. And it goes on to say.
Inconsistent. Petition is found to be inconsistent with the city of Hendersonville twenty thirty comprehensive plan based on the information from the staff analysis, analysis and because the petition does not align the city's twenty thirty comprehensive plan's goals in a medium intensity neighborhood, future land uses designation to provide density at a rate of two to eight units per acre. We, number two, we do not find this petition be reasonable and in public interest based on the information in the staff analysis, public hearing, and because one, scale of development is out of the character with the surrounding single family neighborhood. Two, uh, proposal fails to address compatibility as the site plan does not scale back in intensity slash density as the site transitions from Greenville Highway to the R fifteen single family neighborhood. And three, the extent of the proposed land disturbance would do excessive damage to urban forest land and natural drainage areas within the city limits.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. If we could add one thing to the motion, um, the extent of the proposed land disturbance would do excessive damage to urban forest land and natural drainage areas within the city limits in an area that is already prone to flooding. Okay, I'd like to have that if you don't mind.
That's right.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We have consensus. Thank you. Thank you for all the comments and um, appreciate you everybody coming out tonight. Thank you for all the comments and um, appreciate you everybody coming out tonight.